...happier, not having to harass people. It's the start of the new school year and I would like to remind any parents who are out there listening or any young kids that are listening that Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are starting up. And I'm sure that there are, I know there's availability in our junior Girl Scout troop and I know that I have lots of friends who have Brownie troops now and Daisy troops and I've talked to the Boy Scout leader and they have space so I would encourage you then to, if your kids are interested, to sign them up for the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts. Terri?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First, I would like to thank everyone who worked on the Maple Avenue Culture Fair and for those who came out, especially coming out in the misty rain that we had all morning and afternoon. The fair was amazing success considering the weather. We did have, most of the vendors showed up. We had some problems with the entertainment because of the weather, but we had very interesting Ethiopian coffee demonstration. We also had some excellent music and jugglers of mine. Really appreciate everyone's hard work in putting that together and appreciate those who were able to come out for it. I had a couple of other items I wanted to talk about tonight. First is a simple request, Ms. Matthews. When they redid the curbs on Ritchie Avenue several years ago, they neglected to repaint the curbs for no parking along the curve, the curve in Ritchie Avenue. And if you could check into that, I'd really appreciate it. But, you know, this week, we had, I think, a very successful primary with our voting. I really appreciate the number of people who turned out, but I'm terribly concerned about the problems that occurred during the voting process. When I think back, you know, a couple of years ago, someone within the state decided that although we don't, haven't had a problem for years and years of voting, that they were going to change the way that we do voting. We went to electronic machines and since that time, we've seen a lot of problems occurring. I think this is a serious situation, not just because of the problems we saw this year in the elections, but also some of the reports that we've seen from SAIC Corporation that did an analysis of the voting machines, the electronic voting machines and found problems. Most recently, there was a report that came out from Princeton University of ways to actually hack the machines and harm the vote of the community. And I think that this is a, this is a matter of trust and confidence for the public in the voting process. I think it's something that works to erode democracy. And again, if you recall how many years that we had of voting, that there were some minor problems, but nothing to the extent that we've seen in the last few years. And I would like to suggest that this council form a committee to look into this and represent the residents at Tacoma Park in this issue. I think it's admirable that the county has awarded a contract for looking into the voting problems, but I think we, as a council, should work with this community to see if we don't want to take a firmer stand, not just in our own city elections, but in the elections, the general elections each year. You know, right now, I have a lack of confidence in the, not only in the voting and the electronic machines and in the processes that we have in place. And I would like to suggest that this council, you know, form a committee of city residents to address this situation and see if we don't want to take a firmer position. I'd be interested to hear feedback. I have a couple of other items that I, that I want to mention.
Well, as a result of the primary election, the city of Tacoma Park is in a very good position to speak to the county council about issues that we might be concerned about. And I think that this would be a very good opportunity to do that. And so, I don't know if we need a group of residents, but I do think that we have a very good avenue to pursue those kinds of issues.
I thank you, Mayor Porter. And I would suggest that anyone who is listening that is also concerned about the election and the changes that have been made at the state, if you are concerned, to contact me at 301-565-0190. And we can group together the like-minded individuals to make a plan on how we can be more vocal about our concerns. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Mark Elrich, or not thank him, but to congratulate him for his winning vote in the race for county council at large. We are sorry to see that he'll be most likely leaving this council after the general election, but we're certainly happy to see someone from this council go on to the county council. And then one last thing I would like to mention is that a resident of Ward Four by the name of Joseph Kurzon is celebrating his 104th birthday today, and I'd like to wish him a happy birthday. Mr. Kurzon is an amazing individual who still lives independently. He still cooks his own meals and he's reluctant to come here so that we can all congratulate him on his 104th birthday, but I think the, his neighbors are planning to throw him a party this Thursday to celebrate.
Hope it wasn't going to be a surprise.
Not anymore. Thank you.
Anyone else? Troy? And then Doug?
I would also like to congratulate Mark and just wish that he was here so he could take a bow.
He is.
Excellent. You are just in the process of being congratulated, Mark.
That's right. Mark, Terri has already congratulated you for your success and I would also like to. I'm so pleased with the outcome of the Tuesday's primary because it looks like we will be having five Tacoma Park residents in office. George Leventhal, Heather Mazur, Jamie Raskin, hopefully Peter Franchot, and Mark Elrich. So, that's terrific. I am just so impressed with the energy and the dedication that people brought to this election and thrilled with the outcome. The two things I would like to bring to people's attention are that the Wamata Compact Hearing has been scheduled. It's October 11th. I'm trying to find out the time, but it is something that this council takes very seriously. We have been working on this issue. Our legal counsel is working on this issue, our staff. And what I would like to see this council authorize, next week we'll be talking about the issue, it will be on the agenda, but I would like us to think about and authorize that we do outreach to both Maryland and DC residents who are concerned about the metro development and have weighed in in the past, communicating with them by postcard or some other appropriate measure, medium to let them know about this compact hearing and let them know about the process we'll be going through between now and then to represent the community's views.
As you know, we are discussing that issue and there's a proposal for a resolution expressing the council's point of view that could then be used in testimony before the compact hearing by council members. That's scheduled for next week. And I join you in encouraging people to come and participate in that discussion. I think Doug had something he wanted to add.
Yes, two quick announcements. One is the City Planning Department and the Public Works Department have been, have done a great job in putting together a couple of options for traffic calming at the corner of Glen Side and Wildwood. And on Thursday at seven, at the Bright Lights Baptist Church, the neighborhood is invited to take a look at those options and have them explained by the city staff. And at that point, hopefully, we'll come to a decision and then the construction can happen before the end of the season, which will be great. The other item is, this is directed to you, Barb. I've noticed that there's a lot of violations in Ward Six concerning rubbish on sidewalks, broken fences, overgrown yards. This is mainly on Wildwood, north of Merwood, up past Jackson. And if the enforcement officer could, at her convenience, take a look at that, it would be much appreciated.
We'd be happy to do so.
Thanks.
I just want to add my congratulations to Mark on the upcoming election and also to George Leventhal. And I think it's interesting to note that the two candidates with the largest number of votes at large in the county are both Tacoma Park residents. And I think that may be a recognition that there's some particular expertise that we have down here that speaks to issues in the county.
In addition to the fact that we turn out in large numbers for elections, both of which are important. I just redundantly want to also add my congratulations to Mark. And I thought it was a very good race that you ran and I'm very pleased that you came in. When I, when I sent you the note, you were third that morning, but you ended up second by that afternoon. So, I think that was pretty good. I also wanted to just mention that on Wednesday, the day after the election, after being at the polls for God knows how many hours, I don't remember, I went up to Annapolis to present the city's legislative priority request to MML. And MML is, the members of the Legislative Committee were very interested in both of our recommendations, municipal aggregation and the third-party review of tax duplication rebate issues. But they particularly asked a lot of questions about the second one and seemed extremely interested in the issue of MML getting involved in some of these city-county discussions over rebates. There were several members of Eastern Shore communities there who reminded me that those people who live in May counties, where it says that the county may provide the municipality with a rebate, were even one step further back than we were. But I assured them that it was all the same fight and that we would, we could all work together on this issue and they agreed with me. So, I think that this is an issue that is gaining more traction among municipalities across the state as everybody gets more and more in the situation where available forms of revenue that a municipality can control become more and more limited. And I don't know whether we'll make it to the priority list. Out of the dozens of requests that they get, they usually only pick two or three. But it is definitely a sign that interest in that issue is spreading across the state. There's also the issue that the board recommended that there be a permanent municipal revenue subcommittee of the MML Legislative Committee, which would keep this issue and other similar revenue issues before MML on an ongoing basis. So, I think that both of those are very good news for Tacoma Park's effort to work with other municipalities across the state and getting a better and fairer opportunity for us to make our case on the inadequacies of the rebates that we get.
Anyone else?
I see some.
Yes, we'll let you rebut.
I'm not going to rebut. I want to say, first of all, to reassure you that the issue of municipal rebates was raised not just by people in this community, by people in Lockville and Gaithersburg and some of the other towns as well. And there's the interest around the county in addressing that issue, not just in Tacoma Park. And I have tried to avoid using this podium as a platform for my campaign. So, I won't say a lot tonight, but what I do want to say is thank all of you for your remarks. And to the community of Tacoma Park, I'm just exceedingly grateful. The numbers that I ran in Tacoma Park were really, really strong. And when I look at the returns across the county from here up to Kensington and this is a core, people really did turn out and I'm really pleased to have the support and the depth of support I have in the community. So, I will have more to say, but not on this podium and at a party that everybody will be invited to. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Okay. This is the time set aside on the agenda for public comments. I would remind people that public comments are appropriate on any of the items on the agenda, since we don't have regular session agenda this evening, or any other item you'd like to bring before the council. Also, remind you to identify yourself when you come to the podium and keep your comments to three minutes. And the little light on the podium will let you know when your three minutes are up and I'll remind you also, Pat.
Okay. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd also like to congratulate you, Mark Elrich, on your victory. Also, I'd like to tell everybody, I'm proud to say that Jamie Raskin is now going to be our new state senate, it looks like. But I'd also like to, also like to remember that Ida Rubin has done a lot for the seniors up at Leisure World and she's a, you know, I don't, I hope nobody has any hard feelings and I hope we can all work together as Democrats and human beings here in Tacoma Park and Montgomery County and throughout the state. Also, it would be great, if it's possible, when someone's in the hospital the night before Election Day, if it's possible that they can still somehow get a chance to vote. Because there were some people that I knew that were in the hospital and they could not get a chance to vote and it really, they're really disappointed because, you know, you never know, you know, one, everybody's vote does count. And if it's possible for Tacoma Park maybe to add something onto their election ordinance or something that would allow maybe them to bring, you know, ballots up to the hospitals and stuff so that our residents can vote, it would be great. And also, it'd be great if Tacoma Park could somehow spearhead an investigation, finding out what the dickens happened and what really happened with those, you know, cards that go with the election things, the electronic machines, you know, which I really don't trust, you know, whether it's an act of pure incompetence or whether it was electoral terrorism or something in between. I think Tacoma Park could somehow spearhead an investigation because Tacoma Park has been leading the way throughout the United States on several different issues. And I think that would be one to do. And the second, to get people who are in the hospital to be able to get to a ballot or get a ballot to them, a provisional ballot or something, so that they don't have to forfeit their vote because of a medical or a mental condition. I would like to see everybody have a chance to vote because that is my most important thing. As you all know, I've been known to just walk out of emergency rooms so I can vote. And I'd like to see people who cannot do that to have the chance to vote. And also, let's everybody work together this year. You know, I'll be, I'm glad to see everybody doing good. I want to see, I'm glad to see the voter turnout. And I'd like to see everybody work together as Democrats and human beings here in Tacoma Park and throughout Montgomery County. We can make our city and our state a better place to live and to work. Thank you very much.
Pat, you've learned to time three minutes exactly right.
You're kidding. Right on the nose, huh?
Right on the nose.
Really? Hot thing.
Andy Kellerman, Chair of the Public Safety Committee. I was only going to say one thing, but then the mayor dropped some very good news on us and I say I am very, very happy about the rebate issue getting some traction from MML because I was sitting right here. It was last year when you came back from the very same meeting saying that I can't get MML to listen and to give us any, any support on this. So, I hope we're going to get somewhere. I really seriously think that a third-party oversight of some sort is the key remedy for the rebate. Okay, so that's. The other one, the perennial defibrillator. I'd like to see that put back on the agenda and dealt with. And I'd like that to have notice, sufficient notice given to us because there are a number of-
What issue is that, Andy?
I'm sorry?
Defibrillators, okay, yes.
Defibrillator, right, I'm sorry. Because there are several industry representatives who would like to give testimony as to, you know, what is involved in defeating and caring for a defibrillator. Because that seems to be one of the issues that is brought up for tabling it, let's say. So.
Yeah, actually, I have been talking to the staff about it. I've also been doing a little research myself and I understand from the work that I've been doing that Terri Siemens was right, that defibrillators are becoming sort of a more common, sort of expected precautionary item available in most places. So, I have, I am planning to bring it back on the agenda. I think it was a good idea.
I think we're reaching what's Pentagon called the tipping point where it's now an issue of not having one and a risk of not having one in a public space.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not only the question of the defibrillators, you want to have somebody trained to use them. And we also, my understanding is that we need to do some checking on our insurance to see how that, how we would work with our insurance carrier on it, too.
Well, that's what the, some of these people could testify to.
Sure.
The people who are selling it to the state or selling it to-
Yeah, we are definitely having, if you, if you have any particular names, why don't you mention them to the city manager after the meeting? So, we make sure that we know, you know, what information is out there.
I can email that, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor Porter, I appreciate your bringing that on to the, on to our agenda in a near meeting, near future. But it brings up a point that I wanted to ask about, and that is, we used to keep on our rolling agenda a list of requests for agenda items that council members have made. And I know that has been dropped off of some of the rolling agendas. I don't think it's carried anymore, but it's very, it's very difficult for us as council members to know whether it's just been forgotten or whether it's still an item that you are still looking for a spot to put on an agenda. And I wonder if we couldn't go back to including that information on our rolling agendas.
The city clerk does keep such a list and I would be happy to, you know, circulate that to members of the council. The reason we took it off the agenda is some of the items on there had gotten very old and the council was no longer pursuing them.
Well, I think it would be beneficial to maybe keep it up to date, but-
Right.
It's also beneficial for the community to see that our requests are still not just forgotten, but they're still pending so that we can see that they are going to appear on agenda. So, I'd like to see that list back on the rolling agenda in the future.
I would look at that request, I think.
I'll talk to the city clerk. It involves some effort to keep it up to date and that involves taking things off as they become no longer timely, as well as putting new things on. And I'll talk to her about how much time and effort that letter requires.
I appreciate that because when they do go off in this way, we don't know it. As someone who has requested that item, we never are told that they've disappeared. We're still expecting that they will appear on a future agenda.
Well, they usually disappear either because the council's made another decision or because they have been dealt with in a different, in a different way. But I would be happy to get the council the non-cleaned-up list that we're working off of and then also talk to the city clerk about how much time it would take for her to clean up the list so it could be available and useful to the public. I know that we already have problems with people who sort of don't take seriously enough the notion that the things on the agenda are not necessarily promised for that date. And I've had people get very upset because their item got pushed back when it had maybe just been parked on a date so we didn't forget it. And I don't want to hold information out to people that's inaccurate.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Catherine Farr and I'm a resident of Park Ritchie, 7600 Maple Avenue. And we were given a fairly thick packet about a week ago concerning a proposed rent increase, a hardship increase of 38 percent. And I am deeply concerned about that. I know Tacoma Park has rent control laws. I mean, I understand that the management has made improvements. However, it seems that 38 percent over three years is still pretty steep. That's still 15 percent a year for two years and 8 percent for the third year. My other concern was the timeliness of it. We were given the letter, but we were not, as far as I know, a lot of the residents aren't aware of the council meetings and when they occur and that they even have a voice. And then today, and I received another letter in the mail that says that if we want a written reply, we only have till Friday, the 22nd. So, I was also concerned about that, that we're, we don't, we seem to be given a very weighty issue and haven't been given a considerable amount of time to really do anything either separately or jointly, you know, as a apartment community.
I, I'm not sure that that, that doesn't sound like it complies with the timeframe as, but I wonder if we could, if the council could get some information on the timeframes and whether that complies with them and also what is going into this 38 percent increase over three years.
Yes, I'd be happy to talk to Ms. Danson and get something out to you tomorrow via email.
Okay. Terri, did you have any?
I think, yes, you know, I did get a chance to see the letter and I will share that, the letter that Southern Management sent to the tenants at Park Ritchie Apartments. And I'll share that with other council members. I would be interested to see a copy of the letter that you just received today. So, I can also copy that and give that to the council members. I think there are a couple of things in here. One is that it's probably not just a coincidence that the, an attorney from the Park Ritchie Apartments came to a council meeting several months ago and threatened to sue us because of rent control. And at that meeting, I asked them if they had ever applied for hardship increase in their rent. And they said that, no, they hadn't. And I said that then they should go ahead and sue us because they haven't sought relief through the current legal mechanisms. So, I suspect this is probably a follow-up to that. But I, for one thing, I know that the Tacoma Park law does provide for hardship petition to increase rents, that that petition will be reviewed by the city. The absolute worst case, if it was approved, it would be implemented over a three-year period, as you said, with no more than 15 percent increase in rent during any one year. But that presupposes that their application is approved in its entirety as they submit it. And that's not necessarily a foregone conclusion. The city will review the, the numbers that have been submitted and see whether or not they do deserve to increase rents over and above what's allowed by rent control itself. So, it's, it's going to take some time, you know, to go through this process, but I think you raise a valid point that we need to check out, which is, are they following the rules on the proper way to do it? I also noticed today that, that your parking lot there at Park Ritchie was resurfaced and I would like to think that, that, you know, they're doing maintenance that is necessary for improvement of the building and not looking for ways to force the rent up through capital improvements. So, anyways, a lot of things to look at. There's no, I can't offer you much assurance at this point in time, other than the fact that we will certainly look at things that you've brought forward. And I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Do you know that it is a hardship, hardship increase petition?
That's what it says. I'm looking it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the city will look at that. And it can also be appealed essentially to COLTA would be the other thing. It sounds like something of this magnitude is very likely, that's likely to happen. Is there a tenants association at the Park Ritchie?
There is no tenant association, but I think this could certainly be the catalyst that would help a tenant association form very quickly. And I think my friend Ralph here in the audience can help Catherine with ideas on how to move forward with that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council?
I guess, is this the time for interviews for public safety?
No, no, we've got a separate item on our agenda that's coming after the city manager's comments. Anyone else would like to speak to the council? Okay, let's move on to the city manager's comments and then we'll do the interviews.
Just a couple of items on the Community Center project. As I had mentioned, approximately two weeks ago, it does appear that we are close to resolving the, the claim that was filed by PowerMax. As you may recall, this was JFK's, the contractor for Phase One, the mechanical sub- As you may recall, this was JFK's, the contractor for Phase One, the mechanical subcontractor. We do have a draft agreement that's sort of being bandied about by the parties. As part of this process, we did have a punch list inspection done on the mechanical items on Friday. I'm waiting for that report so we can ensure that any language as part of that settlement adequately protects the city. But my hope is that perhaps by the next week or two, we will have this matter resolved. There are still, as the council is aware, a number of other proposed change orders and items that are still in play with the contractor for Phase One. That process is certainly moving very slowly, and we're continuing to try to chip away at those items to see if we can get them resolved. A more positive front, the gym feasibility study is progressing well. As soon as we have more definitive information, we'll be sharing that with the council. But it is going very well. Got some positive feedback from the Community Center Liaison Committee about their meeting with the firm back at the latter part of August. Unrelated to the Community Center, just a couple of items. I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago that the security system at Hefner Park, this was the remote card reader system, would be completed on or around September fifteenth. I checked with TRG Construction this morning. There is still some residual work that needs to be done, but it does look like we're kind of getting into the home stretch of that, and that should also be done sometime within the next one to two weeks. Related to the city's annual financial audit, as you're probably aware from the fact you weren't in your normal conference room for the closed session this evening, the auditors are on site. They arrived today. Will probably be here through the remainder of this week, perhaps early into next week for their field work. We have done a lot of work on the audit, basically via email. The preliminary work was basically already done for the most part. So the audit is certainly progressing well, and I express my appreciation to Yvonda Brooks and her staff. They've done a tremendous job of preparing for this year's audit. Councilmember Clay had raised several issues I just wanted to touch on. She is correct that there may need to be an amendment to the definition of commercial vehicles. This issue arose because of a constituent concern out of Ward Two. Acting Chief Corsi, in looking at the definition, did not feel it was probably tight enough to perhaps address the concerns of councilmember Clay's constituents and perhaps other areas of the city. We will be basically putting some information together and working with the mayor to perhaps get something on the agenda in the near future. Councilmember Clay also noted that the permit parking area, that there was a section of the New Hampshire Avenue Service Road that is not included in the ordinance that was passed by the council. Once again, that'll be an issue that we'll need to be working with the mayor to get on the agenda, just to kind of close that small section and bring it into the permit parking area. And councilmember Clay, I do owe you an answer on Belfort Towers, and we'll give that to you later this week. Okay. If there's any questions from the council, either about the Community Center or any other matter, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I noticed that the card reader on one of the meetings rooms doesn't seem to work. At least, my card doesn't open.
Yeah.
Is that?
Your card is supposed to open.
Yeah. The way that all the cards were programmed, as the council is aware, the Recreation Department, basically for security reasons, basically handles the reservations for all the meeting rooms.
But I have that room on Wednesday night from seven-thirty to nine-thirty.
All we need to do is then just make arrangements to ensure that the recreation staff ensures that room is unlocked.
Okay. Because I thought that what it would do is it would program it so that I could unlock it during those hours.
We can also look at that. I'm not an expert, mayor, on the programming for that. I can certainly check to Mr. Castillo and see if that's the case. But everything has been centralized just to ensure that there's kind of a defined system in terms of reservations. And truthfully, that the Recreation Department staff knows when those rooms are in use, so they know which rooms to go back through and check to make sure windows are secured and everything else.
Right. And generally, I do ask them to open it up for me, but that means that somebody has to leave the desk
Right.
And go and open it. And so I thought that the idea was that, you know, if I have sort of a standing reservation for my office hours, Wednesday evenings from seven-thirty to nine-thirty, so people can meet with me in that room, that I would be able to open it. But I can continue to ask them, it's just that that means that they have to leave the information desk and go and open the room.
Yeah, let me check and see what's possible, and just not that familiar with the particulars of the programming.
Yes.
I have the feeling Terry and I are heading for the same point.
Go ahead.
I've had some previous discussions with the city manager and various city staff about my sense that there may need to be a little adjustment to that system for access to the rooms being strictly controlled by the Recreation Department in terms of the schedule, and that there might need to be some accommodation for council members to be able to have some access to some rooms on a more irregular basis than the mayor was just referring to. And I'm hopeful that those discussions and anything else that Terry might add might move that along.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is a new process, and I think it's clear that we need to refine it some. There, you know, have been times and, more times than not, where rooms aren't unlocked when they need to be. But again, I realize it's a new process, it's something that staff is still learning and trying to refine. But I also, when there's not a meeting scheduled for one hour and the next hour has a meeting, it would kind of be nice if the room opened a few minutes early, so people would get in and get set up before a meeting starts, just little things like that. And I've also noticed that we, you know, paid to put in this door for access to the second floor from the police lobby, but that often that door is locked, and people are sent outside to come in the outside door to go up. And even tonight, when I got here, I noticed that the inside door is propped open with a chair. So again, it's not a criticism, because I know there's a lot of new things going on, but I'm hopeful that those things will be refined soon.
Yeah, some of the doors that you've mentioned have been reported to the contractor as concerns. I think the bigger issue that some of you have raised might be an appropriate discussion to have with Ms. Hayden during the upcoming work session, which is basically just about the Community Center operation. I would note that was originally scheduled for next week. Ms. Hayden is dealing with a serious medical issue in her family, so that has been pushed back a few weeks. But with the council's indulgence, that would be perhaps a good discussion to have with Ms. Hayden.
Yeah, and I think also, you know, what's needed in a room would be nice if, you know, like, there were chairs in the room before the meeting started, things like that. Again, I, you know, it's a big new facility that they're all learning, so.
Is there anything else? Okay. We are running a little bit behind time, but now is the time for the interviews. We have two people interviewing for the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, Steve Cavalo and Charles Thomas. Do you all, you both want to come up and sit at the table up here at the front? Now, Steve, you are a reappointment. You've been on the committee for a number of years. And so I think what we might do is just start with Mr. Thomas, since you're a new applicant to the committee, and we may have more questions for you, because we have more experience with Mr. Cavalo. We've got the information that you sent to us, which is very helpful, and it certainly sounds like you've got some good background for this. Do you want to just briefly summarize for the council why you're interested in being on the Public Safety Committee?
Sure. Well, my wife and I just moved back to Tacoma Park last month with our two-year-old daughter. We had lived in Tacoma Park for about seven years and then bought our first house in Lenmont and had always had a yearning to move back to Tacoma Park. And finally, all the variables came together where we are delighted to be back in this town that we've loved for so many years. And while I did live here, as many great things as there are about Tacoma Park, I'd always been concerned about the crime. Back when I was living in a group house in nineteen ninety-six, we had a burglary, an attempted burglary. Someone broke into the house in the basement, through a basement window, while I was still upstairs sleeping in the early morning. Luckily, a neighbor saw him going in and called the police. And I was woken up by the police knocking on my bedroom door, waking me up, making sure that everything was okay, that there weren't more intruders in the house and so forth. So, you know, so I really feel like, you know, the police may have saved my life that day. I don't know what might have happened if the intruder had managed to make his way upstairs and wandered into the room. So it was pretty scary. And then a couple of years later, when renting in an apartment with my wife, the police showed up at the door to ask if we had seen anything regarding an armed invasion next door, where some guys broke in with a shotgun and tied up the middle-aged couple. And again, just terrifying to think what could have happened to them, what could have happened to us if there were stray bullets. I'd seen a mugging a couple of years ago, attempted mugging on Carol and Maple one night. And, you know, I wasn't a very good witness, because I was a half a block away, and it was dark. But seeing the person struggling with the lady's property, which she managed to salvage before he ran away, but, you know, just, it really drove home, just, you know, all my concerns over the years, just whenever I'd read the police blotter and so forth, and to see such a otherwise peaceful, friendly community having these, these instances of real serious episodes of violent and property crime. So in moving back, and now especially with the extra kind of nesting instinct with the young daughter, I really felt it important to do what I can. And I think this is an area that I have some academic, as well as practical expertise. I studied criminology in college about fifteen years ago and had had a course with an honors option independent study where it consisted of weekly meetings, one-on-one with a professor who was the head of the Pennsylvania Commission on Sentencing at the time. And he assigned an immense amount of reading materials. I think I was reading about a book a week and then talking with him about it at the next meeting. And I really got a passion for the issue. And that's led me to work in the field of drug policy reform professionally. I'm currently executive director of a group called the Interfaith Drug Policy Initiative, where I work with a whole variety of religious groups, different denominations that support different levels of sentencing reform and so forth. You know, so I really see that I kind of have, you know, as a longtime ACLU member and so forth, where I really, I really want to help the community be as effective as possible in helping protect people from serious violent and property crime while finding that balance to be able to be sure that the, that the people's civil liberties are respected and that the laws are proportionate and so forth. So, you know, it really seems like a lot of, a lot of converging kind of factors that have led me to see that on this committee, you know, I'd like to start off by learning as much as possible, visit some neighborhood watch groups and, and talk to the police and get a deeper understanding of the crime data and trends, and what are some of the more effective police policies nationwide and so forth. You know, something that I'll, you know, look forward to putting in the time and the energy to make sure that I could do my part to help protect people in Tacoma Park from being harmed.
I was particularly interested in your experience as executive director of the Interfaith Drug Policy Initiative, because I, you know, as with many urban communities, there is, there are drug problems in Tacoma Park. And at the same time, I know that there are many people in Tacoma Park who are interested in, particularly young people, who have committed drug crimes, not necessarily being essentially forced into a life of crime by unrealistic sentences.
Exactly.
And so I think that if we could figure out ways to prevent young people from getting involved in that kind of activity, that would certainly be something that would be, something the community, I think, would be very amenable toward. So I really do appreciate that, that your work as the executive director, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Do other members of the council have questions?
Again, not a question. I just would like to thank you for volunteering. I think your background, you know, fits like a glove with the committee.
Thank you.
And I really, I think you'd be a real asset to the committee. So I thank you for stepping forward. And sorry about your burglary or home invasion, really.
Right, well, yeah, that was a breaking and entering, not technically an invasion that I experienced. That was an attempted burglary. I guess the home invasion involved some sort of use of force in the process, and that was what the neighbors had experienced.
Okay.
But whatever the technical terms are, they were, they were very frightening.
It's all frightening, yes.
But thankfully, I didn't suffer any bodily harm myself in the process, so.
Yeah, and it's a scary situation, and you're fortunate that it came out the way it did, to be very violent.
Anyone else in the council have questions for Mr. Thomas? We do have a couple of vacancies on the, on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee. And so, you know, I think we've got room for, you know, an additional member to be appointed at this point. So we very much appreciate your volunteering, and I think your background would be quite helpful.
Thank you very much.
Turning to Mr. Cavalo, now you've been on the committee for a while now, and so you're looking for reappointment to your current seat. Is there anything you want to talk to the council about in terms of things that the committee's doing right now, or something that you're particularly involved in?
Well, Mayor Porter and council, one of the biggest things the Public Safety Committee has been pushing or attempting to push lately has been emergency preparedness, in particular non, non-electronic communication, for lack of a better term. In other words, when the power goes out, when we happen Isabel, this isn't going to work.
Yeah.
Okay? We found that out, Isabel, we found that out unfortunately on September eleventh of two thousand and one, when the circuitry of cell phones completely overloaded. One of the unique, for lack of a better term, perspectives I have on the Public Safety Committee, I am a licensed amateur radio operator. I also possess Aries and RACI certifications for what they're worth now. Unfortunately, that is in a state of flux at the time, but it is there. So I've got a good background in both emergency communication, non-electronic communication, and general planning as far as emergencies go. I was in Civil Air Patrol for many, many, many years, in fact, still affiliated with them. In addition to that, I've been able to make some inroads as far as the Columbia Union College Amateur Radio Club, or what used to be the Columbia Union College Amateur Radio Club. I'm happy to report to the council that Buddy Daniels has been in touch with an individual at either CUC or the hospital, I can't remember which, who's responsible for facilities at both of those facilities, has found the radio gear, in addition to that, the towers and whatnot. And I'm in the process of getting, meeting together with him and some other city officials and emergency preparedness officials in both the county and the city in order to try to get a amateur radio station or another form of radio, whether it be licensed ham, or there are a few other non-licensed options to explore in the city. And interface quickly and easily with Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, and FEMA, if that is a necessity, which, in all honesty, it could be. We don't really have a whole lot to worry about, in my opinion, as far as terrorism goes, because we're too close to DC, okay? We really are. But weather will happen. There's always weather. There's going to be probably another Isabel eventually. There's definitely going to be power outages and some form of radio communication from the general citizenry, as far as neighborhood safety contacts, or whatever you would like to call it, back to the city officials, be it the police department, the fire department, the council even, is extremely, extremely, extremely important. In addition to that, any type of operations center Tacoma Park needs necessary or tries to have, which would be an excellent idea, needs to have backup, not only power, but backup radio communications. And amateur radio and the other alternatives are excellent, as far as that goes.
I think, I think that's a very important point. I think one of the most important things that the Public Safety Committee, as well as the Emergency Preparedness Committee, are doing is working on communications within our community. And I think the public safety context is a, is a great idea. I know that it's been difficult sort of keeping that network alive, and, you know, I certainly commend the efforts that you all have made to do that. And I think that's, that's quite important. When Buddy Daniels was here talking to us about his outreach efforts, he also talked about the CERT training. And I, I assume that members of the Public Safety Committee are thinking about participating in that. I don't.
I certainly am going to.
That would be great.
I still maintain my EMTB certification, but I'm definitely going to take the CERT training.
That sounds like it would be a good idea.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we would, we would be looking to you all to give us, you know, advice on those kinds of things, so that would be very helpful. Anyone else, Terry and Colleen?
Yeah, Steve, I just also thank you for volunteering, again, to continue your service on this committee. And I think, you know, I've been impressed with your enthusiasm and energy, and you really served the committee well, I think, with your outreach into the community and not just your, your technical knowledge with the radios and your EMT certification, but it's but it's, I think, just the enthusiasm that you approach the issue with, and your persistence on making sure that things get done, even when people are ignoring you so much. And so I thank you for continuing.
Thank you, there.
It's my constituent, you can't have it. Steve, I wanted to say basically the same thing that Carrie did. I really appreciate that you're coming back for another term on the committee, and before I became a city councilperson, I was sitting in on the committees, it was very interesting. I just spent sixty days on a detail at FEMA, which is very exciting, I'll tell you all about it. But, I just want to say I really appreciate everything that you do for the neighborhood. You're always out walking around, checking on things, encouraging other people to get out and walk around the neighborhood, and I think that's been a real benefit toward too. And I want to say thank you for that, and I also want to say thank you to Mr. Thomas for your interest in the committee.
Thank you.
If I can just comment to the council that it looks like.
If you're about to make the comment, I was going to make right.
With the re-upping of the folks we've interviewed, and the addition of Mr. Thomas, the committee has an overwhelming preponderance of Ward 1, 2, and 3 members, and nobody from 4, 5, and 6. So, I would hope that there could be a little bit of outreach in those wards to find some representatives to spread the wealth.
Right, to Masers, Berry, Elrich, Siemens, if you can help us find some folks for the remaining vacancies, that would be great. And Andy's out there beating the bushes looking for people, too.
Andy, we have one from Ward 6, right?
Okay.
So, will he be coming before us at some point?
Well, we have interviews scheduled for the next several weeks. And so, what we have been doing is sort of trying to interview people when we're able to do that, when their schedules and ours come together.
I just wanted to mention that there's somebody.
That there's somebody from Ward 6, okay, Doug is off the hook.
Take me off the list.
The others are.
There's still at least one more slot.
Yes. Does the council have any remaining questions? Well, thank you both very much for your interest and your willingness to volunteer, and thank you, Steve, for the work that you've put in on this already, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next interview is Carol Hotten for the Tree Commission. And you've been on the Tree Commission for quite a while.
Six years, yes.
Yes, and you are now the co-chair.
Yes, yes, I'm reapplying for another three-year sentence to the.
Well, I very much appreciate that. I noticed from your letter, you said you have been there for approximately twenty to twenty-five cases, which certainly must make you an expert on the Tree Commission's processes.
I suppose, although curiously enough, it seems as though every case is different. I mean, there's always something new with cases, so. But, yeah, that is actually true, that I have learned quite a bit about the process over the last six years. I think I can definitely add value to the commission because of that.
Well, I very much appreciate people remaining on the commission. I know that the Tree Commission is one of the more technically complex assignments that people take on, and I appreciate it that people are willing to stay as long as you have, and being willing to go for another term, because at this point, your expertise, your technical proficiency and your expertise, I'm sure are very valuable to the commission.
Yeah, I certainly hope so, yeah. I just hope that we can hold on to a city arborist for as long. It seems like we've had quite a turnover with arborists, but.
Is there anything else you'd like to talk to the council about in terms of the Tree, what the Tree Commission is doing, or you'd like to see it doing, or?
Well, I would actually like to see my workload reduced, but what I mean by that is that what I would like to see is hearing fewer cases, because when we hear cases, we're basically in a somewhat adversarial situation. Either an individual has applied to have a tree taken down, and it's been denied, and he's appealing that, and we'll hear a situation like that, or someone has been granted a tree permit to remove a tree, and someone else has objected to that. And I would, and I appreciate having that process available for citizens. I think it's extremely important, but I also think it's desirable to try to settle the situation through education, and through outreach, and through, well, educating homeowners about the value of trees, and necessity of trees, which I think most people who live in Tacoma Park are aware of that, but often when they want to make an addition to their house, or some sort of a change to their yard, they won't think through, or they simply won't have the knowledge of how to preserve the trees on their lot, and so they'll automatically apply for a tree permit. And we've actually had several cases where we've actually managed to discuss better ways of modifying their plans, and convince the homeowners to change their plans. And also, I think it's, if we can get neighbors to talk with one another and negotiate the process before, again, it gets to an adversarial hearing situation, I think that would be highly desirable. I think that the opportunities that the Tree Commission have for advocacy are somewhat limited, but I certainly think that we can engage in more education. And in fact, I do try to proselytize to my neighbors and then other residents about the tree laws. There are a lot of misconceptions out there, and I try to explain the process, and explain what can and what cannot be done. And I think, I think if we could do this in a more organized fashion, as I say, I think we might be able to reduce the adversarial process, so.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I would love it if the Tree Commission would sort of work on some of those things. I mean, we have a couple of avenues, we've got the city newsletter, we've got our cable channel.
Exactly.
And something like that, which would be.
Exactly.
You all could use your expertise and your experience on the Tree Commission to sort of provide information that would probably be very useful to the residents.
Yeah.
I think you should think about organizing something like that for the newsletter, the cable channel, whatever you think would be the best way to do it.
Yeah, we have actually, we've discussed it, and the city, the city arborist did, has published articles in the city newsletter about it. But I think there's definitely room for expanding that, and the cable network is a good idea.
I think that's, and I would encourage you to move forward with that.
Absolutely.
I think that's, you're right, it would help to provide information that might alleviate some of the adversarial processes.
Exactly, exactly.
Good, thank you.
If I can just follow up on that and suggest that I think maybe the best way in the long run to do it is to put together a presentation that can be filmed and put on cable channel, because then it can be archived on the website, and anybody who has any question can go to the website anytime and look at it. If it goes in the newsletter, it's a one-shot deal.
Well, no, the newsletter is available.
Yeah, but it's a lot easier for people to see it if the Tree Commission would be.
At least you can't do both.
But if the Tree Commission would be willing to be part of a taped segment, having a discussion or explaining that.
I think that's an excellent idea, I'll bring that up at our next, I'll bring that up at our next meeting.
Is there any kind of case that's been particularly prone to creating either controversy or conflict? You know, there's some, is there anything that stands out as an area that needs more attention? Or is it sort of across the board?
Yeah, hmm, that's a tough one to answer. I think one of, one problem with the, I mean, we recodified the tree ordinance several years ago, and I think there's one issue that continues to cause problems, and that's the tree protection plan. There's still an opportunity for neighbors to object to the tree protection plan, which I find somewhat bothersome, because it's effectively, I mean, the city, the city arborist prepares the tree protection plan, and he's the one, he or she is the one who's supposed to know, and he or she has the expertise. And I can understand the desirability of, you know, giving the neighbors, the people who have adjoining property, which is going to be affected, some say in the matter. But there have been several cases that have come forth, which I really don't think should have, because they involved individuals who were objecting to the tree protection plan, but without any sort of formal expert basis. I don't want to sound elitist, but I think that is somewhat problematic. So, I think that's something that needs to be considered in future.
So, is the result of those cases that the concerns were deemed not to be?
Well, yeah, some of them have actually continued into the county court, and are continuing to be litigated, so. And I think the other problem is that they generate hard feelings, and I just think that's undesirable. I mean, if you're living together, and sometimes it happens, but I think that when you have an avenue, it, the tree protection plan can serve as a wedge between neighbors. So, I think that's less than desirable, but.
That's an interesting thought, maybe the next time that council takes up the tree law, which hopefully.
Hopefully it won't be for a while.
We could think about some sort of more informal process that perhaps neighbors could sit down and talk through before it got so confrontational.
Yeah, I think that.
Because I have heard of cases where it wasn't really the tree protection plan that was the real subject of the concern, it was, it was building plans, and then the impact of what an expansion of a home on one neighbor's property would have on adjoining neighbors, and those kinds of things.
Exactly.
And perhaps there is a way to get that earlier in a more positive and creative way, rather than, as you said, waiting until it's gotten very adversarial and it ends up being fought out in the courts.
I think it might be desirable to have some sort of mandatory, what's the term, conciliation or mediation.
Mediation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not mandatory, but people can do it now, because we've got a, there's a mediation process that people can access, and maybe encouraging people to do that before it gets to the point of.
Exactly, exactly.
Being adversarial might be useful.
Yeah, and it would be useful, just as an opportunity to sort of get all the concerns out on the table. I, one problem I see with the tree law, and I haven't really figured out a way of getting around this, but it is sometimes used as a proxy for dealing with other issues. So, having some sort of mediation, I think would be highly desirable.
Well, we can certainly, I mean, people have the opportunity to avail themselves of that right now, and maybe letting them know about those opportunities would be useful.
Yeah, if you had a more formal process, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Well, we very much appreciate your long service on the committee. I think your ideas are very good, in terms of getting the information out and trying to make things less contentious, but to, you know.
And it's continue to preserve the urban forest, which I.
Yes, indeed, which is the goal of the tree law anyway.
Exactly.
So, thank you very much for your long service, and I'm very happy that you're willing to continue to do it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and congratulations, Mark, and congratulations to Tacoma Park.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of proposed changes to the rental housing licensing program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As many of you know, the city of Tacoma Park administers a licensing program that's for rental housing facilities throughout the community. Rental housing properties have been licensed since the early 1960s, when the county administered the program, and in the mid-eighties, the city assumed responsibility for that. And right now, we have a little over three hundred, excuse me, three thousand rental facilities, or, excuse me, rental units that are licensed. What I have done in the memorandum is to give you some, a sense of what must be accomplished before a rental license can be issued by the city. There are essentially three different types of licenses, their names are fairly self-evident, and they vary depending on the length that the license is issued for, and whether or not you get a six-month license or a biennial license is due based largely on the condition of the property that you have. Up until about two years ago, we had a plethora of biennial licenses, but with the hiring of Marci Seccone, the number of those licenses have dropped dramatically, and now we just have a handful, because a large number of the property owners were unable to maintain the minimums that were required for a biennial license. Basically, in order to qualify for a biennial rental license, you have to have five or fewer minor property violations throughout the entire building. Obviously, a majority of the biennial license holders are single-family property owners, because it's just one unit versus something like the Franklin or the Park Ritchie, which has many more than one unit in the building. And again, a majority of the properties are under the annual licensing process. Essentially, before a property owner can get a rental license, they have to submit an application form, they have to pay their license fees, they have to pay all their property taxes, all their stormwater management fees and fines, they have to have a valid landlord certification, which is a recent requirement, they have to comply with the state's lead paint legislation, which is a relatively recent requirement, they have to address all occulters' orders, all the Tree Commission orders, and they have to certify that they're in compliance with a variety of state and county ordinances and laws governing a variety of health and safety issues. And they also have to pass property maintenance code inspection. As evidenced by that list, it takes some time to go through the licensing process, and there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of give and take that is required before a license can actually be issued. The city manager, or her designee, has the authority to revoke or deny the issuance of a license at any point in time, and typically, that's done when the property does not satisfy the minimum property maintenance code requirements. That's the most frequent reason that we will do that. If a property is posted because it does not have a valid rental license, essentially what we do is we don't shut them down. We shut them down in, to a degree, in that we post the building and indicate that any currently vacant units cannot be rented again. It's challenging to monitor, just keeping the posting on the building can be a challenge. It also creates some challenges for the tenants in the building. We've had people who say, "Oh, well, I don't have to pay my rent anymore, because he's not supposed to be renting," which creates problems for them, too. But that's basically what the system is in place right now. When we met to go over the FYO seven budget, and talked about hiring another code enforcement inspector whose primarily responsibilities would be for the property maintenance code, irrespective of the rental housing properties, we had mentioned that we'd be coming back to you with some changes that we would like to make in the licensing program, which we think will streamline the process, avoid issuing a rental license three days before it expires, and facilitating some redevelopment of some of the facilities in Tacoma Park. So, what I have included in the packet, it's basically the second attachment after the handout that we recently developed for landlords who are interested in learning about what they need to do to get licensed, are some fairly simple things. Some are a little more dramatic than others. What we'd like to do is eliminate the current licensing structure, and base it on the type of rental facility. Rather than doing a six-month, an annual, or a biennial license, look at issuing licenses for single-family and accessory apartments, which would be valid for a two-year period, do one-year licenses for all multifamily facilities, and then introduce a temporary rental housing license, which would address some of the concerns that have arisen as some of the larger apartment complexes. New Hampshire Tower, for example, will be one that's coming up, and Victory Tower is another property where we were unable to issue a rental license because they were in the midst of a major renovation project, and they couldn't go through and fix everything in thirty days, because it was a six-month staged renovation project. And without a rental housing license, it's difficult to obtain financing, it's difficult to rent the apartments to Section Eight tenants, it's one of the requirements of that program, that they have to have, the property has to be licensed. it creates some challenges for tenant associations that are interested in acquiring their property and converting it over to condominiums. Banks or funding entities don't want to finance something that's unlicensed. And I appreciate that. There also needs to be some sort of mechanism to recognize that if you're going through and doing a major renovation, that it may not be possible to get everything all fixed within a very short period of time. Or worse yet, that the current property owner has to make some improvements to the building. It adds on to the cost of the purchase of the property, and then they turn around and tear it all out because that's not part of their plan. So that's one of the things that we're looking at doing is restructuring the types of licenses that we have. If we were to go through and do a single-family accessory apartment, again, a two-year license, there would be roughly 250 units that would have that type of license. There'd be a little over 3,000 that would have a one-year multifamily license. And then the temporary license would vary depending upon what's going on in the community. An obvious candidate again will be Hampshire Towers, which was recently purchased by CPDC in partnership with the tenants association. And they're looking at frankly some very significant renovation. None of the balconies, for example, are accessible because they're unsafe. We're also looking at restructuring the requirements for the issuance of a license. For properties that have never been licensed before, we would like to eliminate all of the things on the list that aren't specifically related to the renting of that particular property and limit it to those activities which are a clear link to the rental license program from our perspective. And I've listed them here. Basically, do an application form, pay your fee, designate a property agent so that we have someone to contact if the water pipes burst in the middle of the night and you've gone to Florida. Obtain your landlord certification, comply with all the state requirements regarding lead paint reduction or lead paint risk reduction, pass property maintenance code inspection, and then certify that you're in compliance with all the other rules. Frankly, that one is less of an issue for us, though it does come up as we're going through and doing the inspection process because we have discovered a large number of properties that are being rented in zoning districts that do not allow for multiple family units or multiple housing units. This is primarily for accessory apartments. What we would then propose is that for the renewal, excuse me, of properties that have been licensed by the city in the past, is that if they were to complete the same paperwork, that we'd issue them a license prior to them passing the rental housing inspection. What this would do would streamline the process. The county has been extremely good about bulldogging landlords that are not making any progress in addressing property maintenance code violations, issuing municipal citations, working with us to get the issues resolved. And our approach would be is if we could eliminate that step in the licensing of landlords that had properties for a long time, that we could streamline the process, give them the license, and then if they fail to comply with the property maintenance code inspection, that we would then pull or revoke their license, issue them, excuse me, issue them a municipal citation, post the building, and go through and proceed that way. Frankly, a majority of the property owners do a fairly good job as far as passing the property maintenance code inspection. That's more true for single-family and accessory apartments, assuming that they've been inspected in the past. They tend to pass their property maintenance code inspection on the first time, and generally, most of the properties have all the violations abated within three months. We also have a number of multifamily facilities that will pass the inspection on the first go-round or within a month of the initial inspection. I just pulled a sampling of the rental facilities that have been inspected, and roughly a third of those will pass the inspection within a month. We're hoping that by being, again, by eliminating this requirement as far as the issuance of a license, that will streamline it, will facilitate the Section 8 tenants that would like to rent within that building or renew their vouchers for continued occupancy of that facility. And it will also sort of streamline the process so that we're not issuing licenses in November that expire in December, and in January, we have to start the whole thing all over again. We're also finding that as the county starts its second and third cycles of inspections of the property, that we're having fewer and fewer violations of each of the buildings and that they're becoming more minor in nature. So initially, the first round took everybody a really long time to pass the inspection. They weren't very happy about it, but they got the stuff abated and did the work that was required. And the second time around, it's been a much smoother process, more cracked windows or missing batteries from smoke alarms, that type of thing. It's not always that minor, but that tends to be a lot of it. We would also propose eliminating the additional fee sections for multiple inspections that's included in the ordinance. This is primarily because we now have transferred over the rental housing licensing inspections to the county. We pay a flat fee. It doesn't matter how many times they go out and inspect it, and we don't have any way of tracking that. So it's somewhat redundant. We would also more clearly delineate under what conditions the city manager or their designee could deny, revoke, or suspend a rental license. If you read the ordinance now, it sort of implies property maintenance code violations. What we would like to do is more clearly include within those reasons for denial, suspension or revocation, violation of the requirements of having an inspection, obviously the property maintenance code, rent stabilization, and the commission on landlord tenant affairs. Those would be situations where there's an egregious and a long history of continual violations of the various landlord-tenant ordinances that we have in place. And we think that that would again be beneficial in terms of reinforcing the importance of those requirements while not making it so onerous as far as, from a logistical standpoint, as far as issuing the rental license. And then last but not least, we would propose increasing the penalty for failing to have a rental license. Right now, it's a Class A municipal violation, which is a $500 fine. We would suggest increasing that to a Class AA, which is a $1,000 fine.
I have a couple of questions. One is that I understand the proposal to do away with the annual, biennial, and six-month licenses, but one of the reasons for putting them into place was to provide an incentive for people to have a sort of a financial reason, and this also is the elimination of the additional fees for multiple inspections, is for people to have a financial incentive to keep their properties up. If we give, for example, all single-family homes that pass the inspection and get their licenses a two-year license, I assume that would be the case even if there were serious property violations. Once the violations were abated, they would then get a two-year license. And I'm wondering if maybe there shouldn't be some exceptions. And maybe also a provision for multifamily properties that have done an unusually good job to get a longer than one year. Just because I think the way, well, the way it's supposed to be operating, although I understand from what you're saying that things don't always operate the way they're supposed to, that we were trying to create an incentive for people to do a better-than-required job of property maintenance and also to penalize people who did a worse-than-average job. And I'm worried about losing those incentives.
We had discussed that. And looking at the people that were or had at some point in time obtained a biennial license, a majority of those were single-family properties or accessory apartments. I'd say fully two-thirds of those types of properties that have been inspected in the last year had 10 or fewer code violations. And that's the requirement right now, or the requirement right now for a biennial is that it's either two or three years, you've had five or fewer minor violations for the entire building. And then again, because of the nature of the fees, that tends to be the single unit. There were a number of properties that were the smaller multifamilies, say, six to 12 units, and were receiving biennial licenses on an ongoing basis, even though they were no longer eligible for one. I.e., they'd gotten one in 1990, so the next time a license came up in '92, they'd got another one, even though they may not have passed the minimum requirements for that cycle. And based on what we've seen in the last two years, very few of those properties would qualify for having five or fewer minor violations. I mean, we can look at it again. If we were to maintain the licenses as annual or biennial and temporary, I would suggest that we redefine what constitutes a biennial and look at five or fewer minor violations per unit, which would increase the number of biennial licenses that are issued.
Well, I'm not necessarily arguing that we stick with that system, but the thing I liked about that system is it gave people a financial incentive to try and maintain their properties. And it would be nice to figure out a way to preserve that. The other thoughts that I had, well, a couple of things. One is, I'm fine with the notion of giving people a license and then doing the code inspections afterwards. Would there be a record-keeping problem with our keeping track of people who did not pass their inspection repeatedly or who showed blatant disregard or whatever? Is that a record-keeping issue? Would we be able to actually yank the licenses of people who weren't doing a good job?
I believe we could. We receive a printout from the county on a monthly basis that indicates when the property was first inspected, at what point it actually passed inspection, and then steps that are being taken to resolve any outstanding code violations, be it municipal infraction or abatement order, or clean and lean, things like that. So we get that information on a monthly basis. The county has also been extraordinarily communicative with us in terms of, hey, keep an eye on this particular property or that particular landlord because there's something going on, or there are ongoing problems regarding certain issues. So I don't think it would be, I can't guarantee it'll be fail-safe, but I think it shouldn't be as bad as it might seem on the surface.
I also received information from a tenant who is renting a unit in a building that's condominium. She's renting a condominium. She suggested to me that many of the people who originally bought condominiums in this building are no longer living there but are in fact renting out their units and are not licensed as rental units, that they just sort of leave the unit and rent it out to somebody they know. And they would be required to
They would be required to
But is there anything we're doing in terms of outreach to maybe condominium buildings to let people know that if they're going to leave the property and rent it out to someone else, that they become a landlord and they have fallen under rental licensing requirements?
Nothing specific to that particular population.
Because many of those people probably aren't professional property owners or property maintenance people. They're just someone who bought a condominium and then maybe they bought another condominium and rented out the first one, and they may not think of themselves as a
It happens all the time, and it doesn't have to be just condominiums. We can think about ways that we can go out and do that.
I think it would be something important to do. And perhaps you're right that it's not just condominiums, but I could see in this particular case how that might be occurring.
You hit most of my questions. I wasn't clear about how the condominiums were affected by this. Like, if somebody just rents one, had a unit, and then rented it.
They have to be licensed.
Does it fall into multifamily or does it fall under?
Right now, we're treated as a single family. But it is a challenge because you have the shared common areas, and then you have two different property owners. You've got the condominium association that is responsible for the common area and the ground, and then you've got the individual for the unit.
But you don't inspect the whole condominium?
We don't inspect the
The condominium, the unit that's in question, plus whatever common areas there were.
Correct.
And then who do you cite if there's a violation in the common areas?
We've been able to work it out. But if we couldn't, it would be both properties, depending upon what the violation was.
Okay.
So for example, you rented out a condominium you owned, the condominium association failed to secure the hand railing to the steps. The condominium association would get the violation notice in any municipal infractions, but you would also get a violation notice for not having a licensed rental property at this point in time. And if the condominium association failed to make the repair, you could get a ticket for not having a license. So we try to work it out. It gets messy otherwise.
Okay. And I guess I'll say I also share the concern about completely giving up the two-year licenses for people who are in compliance. I could be persuaded either way on that. And on the multiple inspection fees, since we're collecting, this is not an issue for the county?
No.
So they're perfectly fine with?
They get their $175,000 a year, and they don't bill me for anything else.
And that's the deal. Okay.
Just to follow up on the biennial. I'm not quite sure whether you've said that it would be difficult or not to just have the biennial as an option for both the single-family and the multifamily, rather than trying to keep that system and replace the single-family and multifamily.
It wouldn't be a problem. Our recommendation is basically, is based on trends that we've seen, that it's the single-family properties that tend to qualify for the biennial license. And rather than taking that additional time or monitoring, just issue a two-year license for a single-family and accessory apartment.
So that your proposal would essentially take the single-family as a group
Correct.
And say, okay, you get biennial license?
Correct. But the other way is not a problem. It's just most of them end up being single-family.
Yeah, just because I like the idea of the, I remember when we did it, it was to, I think we first set up the biennial with the positive incentive, and then staff came back and said, oh, and we need the six months for the real troubles.
Right. I would suggest eliminating the six-month and instead using the power to deny or revoke a license. I think it would be more effective and easier to monitor.
Yeah, because I had original questions about that section and about the additional fees, but your presentation answered most of my questions.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First of all, I'd just like to remind everyone, I am a landlord and do operate a licensed property here in Tacoma Park. Not looking for tenants, no. I have a great tenant. Many years she's been there, and I appreciate her continued residency in our property. But I just wanted to disclose that and also say that I don't see that what we're discussing tonight has such a potential great benefit to me that it creates any conflict of interest. So I will ask a couple of questions. One, I'd just comment that I agree with the observations of several of my colleagues regarding the benefits, or at least what we thought were the benefits, of having the two-year license for people who have done a good job of property maintenance, and also being able to have a single-year license for those that don't maintain their property as well. And I'm not sure that means that we would necessarily, I wouldn't resist changing to what you're proposing, but it would be nice maybe to see, or I'm not saying that we need to keep it the way it is. I'm just suggesting that was a facet of our current law that I think we thought had some benefit. I thought it had some benefit, and I defer to your judgment on that, but it might be nice to see some flavor of that in here still. On item number six, a question, and that is providing the ability to deny, suspend, or revoke the rental housing license for a bad landlord. And my concern is that should this be a single-family house that we're now going to say, okay, forget it, you can't rent, we've now reduced any opportunities for people to rent within Tacoma Park, and it Tacoma Park, and it diminishes the size of our rental housing stock. And I would be more favorable of adding and adding fines but keeping that property in the rental market than to actually take it off the rental market by denying or revoking the license.
We agree. Most of the properties where the license has been revoked or not issued, or there's been the threat of that, have been frankly with the smaller multifamily properties. It's never come up with a single family, and that would be an interesting thing because right now we'd have to post it. And if, say you were a bad landlord and you just didn't maintain your property, we'd have to post it and your tenant, in theory, could continue to live there. You would continue to rack up fines on a daily basis, assuming the judge supported that, but if they moved out, then the only other penalty would be that you would not be allowed to rent it. And again, that would only...
That's if you yanked the license, and I'm saying that if they don't, there are also fines for not doing the maintenance while they have the license. And I'm saying that's a preferable route because then if the tenant vacates, someone else could move in and -- or the property could be vacant and you could continue to assess the fines.
Right. The county is not hesitant to issue fines. Landlord-tenant staff is not hesitant to issue fines for rent stabilization violations. COLTA has a very good system in place that resolves tenant landlord concerns, and the court has upheld all of their decisions with a couple of exceptions. So there are a lot of mechanisms in place to sort of address some of the blatant disregard for our laws. And again, we could issue a fine that would multiply on a daily basis, depending upon the number of violations.
I'll restate my concern. My concern is that by making it easy for you to -- easier for you to revoke that license, it makes it less -- it's an easier route for you to take than the persistent approach you use now with the fining.
Do I understand -- I'm a bit confused now. I thought I understood you to say that you would continue to do fines.
Correct.
But that the revoking the license would be sort of a last effort if the fines weren't working and if the property owner continued, what do you say, blatant disregard for the requirements of the housing. So I'm assuming that if you had this ability, you wouldn't use it first, that it would come only after the fines proved not to be feasible and getting anything done.
Right. As Councilmember Simmons has pointed out, housing is tight in Tacoma Park, particularly for rental properties, and the last thing we want to do is eliminate even more units from the market.
And I don't have a problem with it being used sort of as a last effort. When -- because we have had some cases where property owners, in spite of fines, have ignored the code violation notices and then they've ignored the fines. And I think...
Great, then we get the property and we'll win it.
But usually in that case, it's not the sort of place that you really would want people to encourage people to live if it's in that bad a shape.
If it gets to that point, then the county will generally condemn the building and vacate it. So, I mean, there are different ways of approaching the situation, it's done on a case-by-case basis.
Right. I like it being hard for you to do that, so I don't really -- you have other remedies now. I don't see the need to include these.
Any other thoughts?
Just a quick question on the landlord certification. Are you differentiating between the program for like people who own accessory apartments and the people who -- because that's one area I've heard complaints is the people sitting through a class that's largely focused on multifamily property owners and feeling like they don't get very much out of it that's directly. And could we...
We have been asking people to fill out evaluation forms after each of these, and on the top it indicates whether they own multiple family or single family, because we had heard that -- or we had heard what you had told us before. And frankly, they're all coming back as, we're not getting any of those complaints, at least not in writing from the folks.
Yeah.
Well, they're not -- they should fill it out on the form.
Okay.
I mean, we can show you the forms that we're getting, but when it comes down and it's specifically asked about the rent stabilization, it's a very small piece and we would hate to remove it from the curriculum, if you will, because there are folks that will buy a single-family property and then rent it out and then turn around and buy another one, and now they are subject to rent stabilization. And without us at least giving them that information, whether they slip through five minutes of presentation or not, at least we can say that we told you you needed to follow through on the rent stabilization requirements, and now you own two properties and you're subject to those rules. But the evaluation forms have not been coming back, have not reflected that at all. There's even an opportunity to comment on how we could change it, and they don't.
Any other questions? From what I'm hearing, individual members of the council had some concerns, but the item that seemed to have a number of concerns was whether you could restructure the annual biennial in a way that would work for you, is that...
We're comfortable with maintaining the existing system. I'd like to eliminate the six month. I'd like to add the temporary license and then redefine what constitutes or what would qualify one for a biennial license. Basically, just increase the number of violations.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with restructuring the program. I just, speaking just for myself, I like the incentive that's built into the annual and biennial. And even if it turns out that most of the biennials are single-family and most of the annuals are multifamily, as you suggested that might be the case, at least then we provide an incentive for people who have a single-family property and are not taking a good -- not doing a good job of taking care of it, or people who have multifamily properties and they are taking exceptionally good care of it, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
And I don't have a problem with the temporary. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have an item on replacement vehicles from Public Works, or a replacement vehicle from Public Works.
In the '05-'07 budget, we put funding in for replacement of existing administrative pool vehicle, the Ford Escort. Ford is no longer making the Escort, so the replacement's going to have to change, probably would be a Ford Focus, which I failed to put on the works session cover sheet. But prior to purchasing this vehicle, I thought the council may want to make a determination as to whether or not they would like to consider the replacement of this vehicle to be a hybrid field vehicle versus a gasoline-powered vehicle. I know the council has expressed an interest in that in the past. We do have one hybrid vehicle. We have a Toyota Prius that was purchased, I believe, three years ago, two or three years ago. That vehicle is operating very well. Our mechanics are able to deal with it, though we do send it to the dealer if it has particular things related to the battery or other issues. The vehicles that the city tends to own don't get really high miles, but they do do a lot of inner-city driving, which can tend to be, you know, fewer miles per gallon in the types of vehicles we're looking at. We've called around to dealers in the area to get a sense of the price range. Now, again, these are not bid prices per se. We just asked them for, you know, ballpark prices for their vehicles. The types of hybrid vehicles that we have to choose from at this point would be a Ford Escape, which is at about $25,000, the Toyota Prius at about $24,000, or the Honda Civic at about $23,000. There are some competitive bids, bid awards for some of these vehicles. There aren't for others. We've been told by Honda and that they don't do competitive bid vehicles, so we would have to then price out through, you know, at least three dealers to get a price for that. The lag time would be extended, but the current use of this vehicle isn't such that it's going to, you know, impinge the city if this vehicle takes three months or four months to be replaced versus one that's needed right away because the vehicle's out of service. The current vehicle is in service and is operable. We would just have to expect a longer lead time if we went to a hybrid vehicle. The point in bringing it to the council is for your decision as to whether or not you want to spend the additional funding that we require to purchase the hybrid vehicle, which is going to range from $9,000 to $11,000 or roughly $10,000 more for a non-hybrid vehicle versus a hybrid vehicle. And our current replacement schedule would put this vehicle at a, it's either seven or 10-year, a fairly, you know, extended life for this type of vehicle. We have both a mileage and age criteria. Our vehicles rarely meet the mileage criteria because of the type of driving that they're used in. I think that's about it.
I think I personally would like to see us go in the direction of the lowest possible emissions and the most fuel efficiency. I think Tacoma Park should set an example by trying to convert as much of its fleet as possible to hybrid or alternative fuel vehicles. And as more of these vehicles become available in all classifications, one can see over the next number of years that we would probably be able to achieve that goal. And what I've read about the hybrid electric and gas motor vehicles is that within three years, you can pay back the extra cost of the vehicle. So even though it seems like it would be more costly now by $7,000 or $8,000, in three years' time, we would probably be able to recover that investment and we would have lower emissions and better gas mileage. So I, for one, would be in support of the hybrid vehicle.
Shall I?
I completely second that, and I can say from personal experience that the 2005 Toyota Prius is a fabulous vehicle. It is just, you know, runs well, costs little, and I certainly have seen savings now that gas prices are so high that I'm filling up the tank every three weeks compared to people who drive the same as I do, filling up every week. So it makes a big difference, and I would strongly encourage the council to support the additional upfront costs in order to achieve this long-term goal.
I'm Colleen.
I think it's a great idea to get a hybrid vehicle and make our statement about reducing emissions and being green. I do want to point out that I think a lot of the estimates about saving money, though, are based on the tax rebates that are available to individuals. I think there's still like a three -- is it still $3,000 through 2007? And we're not eligible for any of that, right? So I doubt, you know, we'd have quite as good of a savings and a return if we based it on somebody who was buying the vehicle for personal use. But on the other side of that, if we in fact are using it entirely around town and we're looking at these three different options, we probably want to pick the one that provides the highest around-town gas mileage, because I know some of them are kind of more balanced and some of them then have a lot better gas mileage around town. I know the Toyota Prius is one of those that I guess gets really high around-town gas mileage.
Yeah, and the Civic has got a 50/50 right now, 50 city, 50 highway.
Yeah, I would kind of lean towards the Toyotas and the Fords, but...
Well, do we have a nuclear-free issue here?
We may. I'd have to check and see whether it was happening or not.
Because it may be that the only one we can purchase is the Ford Escape.
Well, we've purchased the Toyota Prius.
No, the Ford Escape has actually not been in the category of energy-efficient. It might barely qualify as a hybrid, but it is not one that I would endorse us pursuing.
Well, let's pursue the nuclear-free. I would be happy with any of them that we can purchase under the nuclear-free ordinance. Bruce and Mark.
Yeah, I'm wholly in support of doing the hybrid, and my inclination is to go with Prius. I know those and have experience with them, and I think if the city has good experience with one, I think it might simplify in some ways to have two similar ones rather than kind of one of each. So if in your investigation and coming back with whatever it might be, I would be predisposed to consider the -- starting out with the Prius as the first choice, and if there's a reason to go another direction, I could be convinced, but I would need convincing from that point.
I'm pretty sure on the nuclear-free issue that we exhausted that problem, you know, potential when we were looking at buying the Prius.
Well, I think it changes, and so I think we should make sure that we're still okay. Mark.
Do any of our vehicles pretty much strictly get used inside the city? Or do we have a way of, for example, if the people are doing inspections of their vehicles that are primarily used inside?
Probably the code enforcement vehicle maybe, but it will travel to Rockville from time to time, you know? So I guess most of the city administrative pool stays within city, but occasionally does the trip to Annapolis, or the trip to Gaithersburg, or the trip to Rockville, Baltimore.
Yeah, I guess the reason I'm raising is that there's another class of vehicle that's coming out now, and they're the fully-electric plug-ins. And, you know, their top speeds are, you know, 45 miles an hour, but if you're in the city, you don't need to go over 45 miles an hour. And there, you know, I know there's one that the price is at about $10,000, and I wonder whether we ought to look around at the feasibility of some of these, you know, all-electrics for vehicles that just spin around town, because then we're cutting emissions even further, even though ultimately the power is generated somewhere, it's still less. And the cost of the vehicles is less expensive, so I'd certainly like to look at some of the options, and I can help you look at some of the things I've been investigating.
And there actually, one of the automakers is coming out with a vehicle which will run on all-electric for like for the first 40 miles, and then after that, a hybrid gas engine picks in. So that's an interesting -- I don't think it's out yet, though.
Thank you. Mark actually brought up the point that I wanted to, and I think we should look at the fleet of cars that we use, not just at the individual case, to see how we can, you know, if it's possible to modify our use of vehicles, because there are the new class of vehicle called low-speed vehicles that the Department of Transportation has authorized for use on the roadways. I believe the maximum speed of those vehicles is 25 miles an hour, but that would certainly be sufficient for operating within the city limits. And if it's -- they are all-electric and they are much more environmentally sound vehicle. So I would like to see if that's something we can do. I, you know, I certainly support the purchase of a hybrid, but I think as we look at Tacoma Park being a leader in the environmental arena, that we should at least look at the low-speed vehicles first to see if maybe some tuning of our fleet might not allow us to use one or two of the low-speed vehicles for within the city use, the city limits.
Just two quick observations. I know if I were city staff driving a low-speed vehicle that was only capable of going 25, I'd sure avoid New Hampshire Avenue. And the other thing is that on a number of occasions, I know when the council needs to go someplace like Rockville, I've made requests for the hybrid and it's never been available. We always end up with a hard van that I hate.
So you want several more.
And I'd love to see that thing gone from the fleet. And so any opportunity to have increased possibility for using a hybrid to go to Rockville or Annapolis would be appreciated.
Sure. Yeah, well, the good news is that the hybrid does get heavy use. It's the first-choice vehicle from anybody going out using the admin pool vehicles.
Yeah, I've driven the Prius to Annapolis and it was fine, although I think it does get -- the mileage is better compared to a regular car around town.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to drive the Prius once to Annapolis, and that's the only time I got to drive it.
I would be happy with our getting any of the hybrids that were suggested. I think we should check the nuclear-free ordinance and make sure that we're okay with them, but then I think I would get whatever seems to get the best mileage around town. I would also agree with Mark that I think we should look at the all-electric vehicles because, you know, if something's pretty much staying in town and there is no reason that we have to assign the vehicle to an individual person. For example, the code enforcement officer could drive, you know, one vehicle around looking at code enforcement violation issues and then drive a different vehicle to Rockville. So I think that that gives us some opportunities. I wanted to bring up an additional issue, though, which is the timing. There is a note that generally the council doesn't start spending money out of the unimpropriety reserve during the first quarter of the year, and we're very shortly going to have a report from the city manager about her first quarter spending patterns. And I would just like to ask her whether she felt comfortable at this point, since we're now approaching the end of the first quarter, whether she would feel comfortable, since it would be second quarter, I mean, by the time we were able to do this, I assume, whether she would feel comfortable doing this in the second quarter of the year, whether we could, since the Escort's still viable, whether we could make a decision now, give direction to staff and then do the purchase farther down the road, so to speak, and later in the year, depending on what the city manager recommended in terms of timing. What's your sense?
Well, I defer to Darryl, I guess, in terms of her sense of how the escort's performing, its maintenance needs. I do know that hybrids have a long lead times, they're so popular. You know, certainly I think like anything we do with the Unappropriated Reserve, it gets down to a matter of, you know, how else the council might wish to spend this funding because other things you have in mind. Overall, I can't say that approximately $10,000 is going to break the bank, so if this is something the council feels strongly about, I wouldn't have any hesitation in saying you go ahead and move forward.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Then I would say that if you think that this is not going to make a difference, we've probably come out of second quarter anyway because first quarter's almost over, I would agree with my colleagues that I think this is a good idea. And I also think it's worthwhile investigating the idea of an all-electric vehicle. And I know we have other vehicles, I understand, we had a discussion with the police department about why the hybrids wouldn't work for their use, and I know there aren't very many hybrid large vehicles, but I don't see why any of the other administrative vehicles couldn't go to hybrid. I think that you're right to bring this to us because I think this is one of the first replacements of an administrative vehicle since we started talking about this, but I'd like to see our whole administrative fleet go to hybrid vehicles because most of those are sedans and, you know, they don't, they don't, they don't have the demands made on them that the police cars do.
I believe when we talked about this with the police chief, it was a time when the new Prius design was just coming out, so that would make it 2004 or somewhere around there. Since then, you do have other options, so I would say that even the police should be examining this as a potential area for savings. You have the Toyota Camry, I believe, and I would caution us from going in the direction of the Ford Explorer. It's just not, it's not fuel-efficient.
I think we're talking about the Escape.
I mean, the Ford Escape, it's not fuel-efficient as a hybrid and has been roundly criticized for trying to, you know, pass for a sheep and, or yeah, wolf in sheep clothing or something. But I did want to say that one of the first ones that came out, the Honda Insight, had 80 miles a gallon. It's very small though, so it's only a two-door car, only front seats. So if we instruct you to look for the best fuel-efficient vehicle, that's certainly one that you would need to consider, but given what the vehicle might be used for, you know, possibly that would be appropriate.
We were told that that was not in production anymore, but I'll have to confirm and see.
So we're not looking at any used vehicles?
Yes, it's not. They have a Honda Civic. Right.
Yeah, and it's not as...
It's been phased out.
Toyota has a Camry too, which came out in hybrid in 2007, four doors, a little easier to get in and out of than the Prius, a little heavier duty, probably doesn't get quite the savings. It'd probably be a great trip to Annapolis in it though.
The council knows too much about this subject.
Yeah. But I think those are a number of good suggestions, but I think giving the public works director the direction that the council is interested in this, that we are willing to spend the additional money and that we would encourage her to pick a vehicle that's appropriate for the use and is the most fuel-efficient and low emissions possible, I think that would sort of cover it and let her to look at the, look at the, what's out there and pick the best selection.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We appreciate you bringing this to us, Darryl. It's very appropriate.
There is the all-electric Tesla, which does zero to 60 in like four seconds and has a top speed of 160 miles an hour. And it's got about 200, it's up to 180.
Okay, the council's going to take a short break and come back for the remainder of our work session agenda.
Yeah.
Give me a whole truck full of button batteries.
Six thousand.
Those little tiny...
Proposed a Safe Routes to School application.
Hello again. The state has roughly $5 million that it is looking at, or it's soliciting applications for the Safe Routes to School program. Essentially, this is a program that's targeted towards schoolchildren and it's designed to encourage them to walk and to bike to school rather than hitching and ride for mom and dad or riding the school bus and to do it in a safe and healthy manner. We have been working with the schools and the PTAs in the area to identify different ideas or different projects that would be appropriate for the area. Right now, we have six schools that have expressed an interest in working with us and we met with them in September to put together this list that's included in your packet. And these recommendations or suggestions were made by the participants, which consisted of the principals of the schools, the vice principals, teachers, and PTA presidents. Several schools did not return our calls and we're not sure if it was because of a timing issue or what and we'll be contacting them again before the application is due just to see if they're interested in entering into a formal partnership with the city and with the other schools that have expressed an interest in working with this on it. Included with your packet is some general information about the program itself. At the end of, at the bottom of the first page of the information sheet talks about the five Es, which are engineering, education, enforcement, encouragement, and evaluation. And when we go through the list, you'll see that these projects touch on the first four Es, engineering, education, enforcement, and encouragement. Frankly, we do not have a lot of engineering or public improvement, public infrastructure projects. And in speaking with Alana Blanchard and David Sewell who are overseeing this effort, they asked that if you had any specific recommendations that they would be glad to see if there's a way that they can plug it into the program. Essentially, it's not a pure traffic calming project or grant. It is infrastructure projects that are, would encourage kids to get to and from school safely, on foot or on their bike. If you turn to the next page, it's the listing of the projects that have been presented during the meetings we've had with potential partners. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on them individually, but just to go through them fairly quickly. The first is to extend the hours for the crossing guard at select locations. Second is to increase or improve communication links between the crossing guards. Third is to institute a police patrol outside the Tacoma Park Middle School and this is more focused on a sense of safety or personal security for the students who are walking to and from school as well as their parents. Fourth is one of the few capital projects we have, which would be to install a sidewalk on the east side of Piney Branch from Philadelphia to Grant Avenue. In talking to S H A about this particular project, this is the intersection with the high embankment with the trees, I put that out of place. Originally, we thought we could kind of shift the traffic over and do this in the right of way and in talking to the state, that's not going to be an option. And if the city were to proceed with this particular project, it would involve acquiring the right of way and installing a retaining wall in order to accommodate a sidewalk on that sense. And it would also involve partnering with the current property owner. We have not spoken to them about this, it's just a preliminary concept plan. S H A is opposed to the loss of that one travel lane because of the high volume of traffic that traverses up and down Piney Branch during certain hours of the day. If we were to receive, decide to proceed with this project and receive funding for it, it would be a city project, it would not be state highway administration. So it's something that the city would be designing, engineering, and constructing.
Would we then have to buy right of way?
Yes.
And couldn't use the state highway right of way?
No.
Can I say on that that I believe one of the reasons we looked at keeping it on the current roadway was cost, we're trying to minimize that.
I understand that, but in talking to state highway administration, Stephanie Janovic indicated that she's gone back and chatted with the folks at that end and that's not a possibility, it will not.
I understand that, so then it's a matter of cost to get it done?
Correct.
Isn't that right, not a matter of whether or not to do it?
Right. And preliminary estimates are that it would be about $300,000.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing with this money is that there is no minimum or maximum that you have to apply for, it's all grant money and there is no match required for it. And they are looking for projects that are the infrastructure as well as the education outreach and the enforcement components. So what we're hoping to do is be able to pull together a list that kind of covers all of those Es and provide some, enough diversity that it will be considered viable and receive funding. So again, this is one of the few capital projects. Number six is also a capital project. Apparently, the pedestrian bridge and connecting the sidewalks on Maple Avenue across Sligo Creek is in very bad shape.
Is it, I mean, what's, I mean, I walk across that and other than some splinters off the boards, is that the one you're talking about, the one that goes on the hiker biker trail?
Right. It was.
I'm not saying don't do it, but I mean, would you, please tell me if it's falling apart because I.
You are not, you're not in danger.
I'm not, I don't want to end up in the creek.
I can get more specific information about it for you when I met with David before he left to go over all these projects.
Okay, if you could just.
He indicated it was inspected recently and the city was encouraged to fix it.
Okay. Just let me know if there's some safety issue with it. I think people ought to know.
If there's a safety issue, we'll.
I'm not the only person who uses it.
You're not the only person.
I'm not the only person who uses it. If it's just a question of the boards aren't well-used, which they are, then that's fine.
Yeah. Well, given the amount that's associated with the repair, it's probably not significant. Thirty-seven thousand is not, would not address a lot of structural issues, if I understand correctly. Seven is actually hiring a coordinator for the program on a part-time basis and on a seasonal basis to oversee the various programming and projects that are proposed as part of this application. We're also looking at an off-road trail program in conjunction with improvements at the Tacoma-Piney Branch Park, which is up here by the middle school, in terms of working with the students to make that trail more accessible and safer feeling, particularly early at night and after school. Again, to encourage children walking and biking to school. That's fairly nominal cost and we're looking at how that might marry with the planned improvements that Park and Planning has for that area. Number nine is an on-road trail program where working with the students to actually map the routes that they take to and from school, sort of an orienteering kind of project. Again, encouraging people to walk, but also using that information to install some sort of signage or decorative artwork that would encourage people to walk. An example that is included here is the walking feet, which is something you see in children's museums, et cetera, in terms of you walk, you follow the orange dinosaur trails when you get to this particular building. Number 10 is pedestrian bicycle safety program and that would be done in conjunction with WABA. Doing a similar type of thing for bicycle and skateboarding. One of the suggestions was to offer it in such a manner that you not only learn the safety associated with bicycling and skateboarding, but also some of the tricks of the trade in terms of how to do some fancy stuff on either. So you have some fun things as well as the more educational component.
On the pedestrian bicycle safety programs, the county pedestrian safety advisory committee actually has some programs that they offer. I'm not sure that they're theirs or other people do them, but there's already pedestrian safety programs that are offered to kids at schools and I think coordinating with them would be also an important thing to do.
Right, and I believe WABA is the group that provides that training for the county?
They might.
And bringing it into the school.
And I think also working with State Roadways on that because I know that they have people on that committee who are interested in pedestrian safety issues for kids.
The State Roadways Committee was to be meeting tomorrow night, but we're having to cancel the meeting because of a lack of a quorum. They'll be looking at each of these projects and whatever recommendations or suggestions that you might have as well as adding more of their own. So the list may grow or items might drop off. And earlier this evening, I received notice that the county has worked out some details so that there's a possibility of partnering with them in some of the educational programs, which would strengthen both their application as well as ours in terms of multi-jurisdictional partnering. So what we're looking at this evening is just our preliminary list. It hasn't, it's been developed by a variety of people. Not everyone has had an opportunity to view it and embed it. And we would be coming back to you after we've had a chance to talk to everybody for a resolution in late October. The deadline was originally the beginning of October, they've moved it back to the first of November.
Mark, I think I saw first, I'm enjoying my first.
Yeah, I'm always grieved when I don't see anything related to rolling tariffs on this list and Flower Avenue. Because they discharge buses and pick up kids on Flower Avenue and on one side of the street. It's absolutely disastrous because there's totally inadequate sidewalks, if there's sidewalks at all. And it's a real problem for kids crossing the street and we only have the one stop sign. And, you know, it's been, it's been an ongoing concern and I know at some point we talked about when the state was going to do repairs, if the state was going to do repairs and how the city could ultimately then get control of that road after the repairs were done. I guess I'm kind of wondering where we are in the deal about the state fixing up Flower Avenue. And is there anything we can do to try to get some safety enhanced, particularly in sidewalks along Flower as part of this?
We would not be able to do that as part of this particular project. One of the things that's specifically not allowed is improvements to bus stops. Again, the thing is to encourage people to walk to and from school. And we can follow up in terms of what the status is of the Flower Avenue improvements in partnership with S H A and the county.
It's not only, it's not only the bus stops because the kids do walk up there and.
Right.
There are new kids who walk the neighborhood, the thing is there are, there's just the dirt of sidewalks if you're trying to go along Flower Avenue.
Yeah.
Isn't that on the countryside where there is such bad.
Yeah, it's on the countryside.
And that can be something I bring up when I meet with them next, or this lady who The parameters of the program are gen, are fairly broad in one sense of the word in that it has to be within two and a half miles of a school. So basically, it covers all of Tacoma Park, though it needs to be something of a documented formally or informally walkway to a school.
Okay. The things that I wanted to reinforce are three, four, and five. These are all really important. They're things that have been talked about for years and there's a lot of community support for it. Many different solutions have been discussed and the one, number four, even though it has a high price tag, is really a bargain when you think about protecting lives and schoolkids on a very busy road. So that's one that this entire program would be worthwhile just to get. Then on number five, I believe that's something, maybe I'm wrong, there's two blocks of sidewalk going in on Boston Avenue and it's in this year's budget. So I'm a little alarmed to see the schedule is so far into the future.
This was added to the list towards the end, recognizing that it is in the capital improvements program. It can be deleted from this list or it can continue to remain on the list freeing up the money that you have set aside for that sidewalk for another project. So it's up to you.
It's the schedule that I'm concerned about.
If we were to, I don't know what the timing is at the Boston Avenue sidewalk right now. Is that going to get done this year?
I noticed that nothing is earlier than March 2007 and I assume that has something to do with when we get the grant.
Grant funds become available the beginning of February and can be expended through the end of September '08.
So I just want to make sure that that sidewalk doesn't slip on our schedule.
Yeah, I can check with the Public Works Director and find out where they are in the process.
Okay.
I know she's very aware that it's in the budget and is working actively on all three pedestrian safety projects.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, first let me say that I'm glad to see this kind of program being put forth because I know that recently, I probably timed with kids going back to school and the change in traffic patterns, I've found myself being amazed at the number of kids who are driven by their parents to school. I've found myself in a position of berating is too strong a word, but maybe chiding or chastising a number of constituents as I've realized that they drive their children to school every day. I said, "You're part of the traffic problem and you're part of kids' health problems and any number of other things and there's any, all kinds of reasons to have the kids get to school by bicycle or foot or something." So this program encourages that. Then I regale them with tales of how we always walked to school, five miles each way across the railroads, et cetera.
And in deep, deep snow, uphill both directions.
And it's all true. And one thing that I would like to add to the list is Carroll Avenue and Lincoln. The mayor was just asking me if I have a sense of how many kids cross there to go to school and my response was if they're in their right mind, none, because it's so dangerous to get across there for kids, adults, anybody. Anything we can do to get an improvement at that intersection, a crosswalk, anything, a flashing yellow light, I don't know what.
Those nice paddle signs so that they can knock those down instead of the kids.
Something. And if it's not this program, we need to get State Highway out there again and see what, if anything, can be done there.
We'll add it to the list and investigate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. This is, this is great. I love Christmas as we make our wish list here. Two things. One is at the micro level, I really appreciate that soon after Ms. Matthews came to the city, she had Public Works install some pretty permanent crosswalks on Maple Avenue. There has been a fantastic test, it has worked great. There needs, the crosswalk that's there, the crosswalks, the two crosswalks that are there could stand with some expansion to make them more obvious. And some other crosswalks should use the same technology because the paint crosswalks don't last more than a couple of months. These crosswalks have lasted for several years. So I would, I would like to see at least in Ward Four along Maple Avenue, the inclusion of more of those crosswalks. And I would suggest that it's maybe appropriate to do those at all the crosswalks near the schools. I will send you a email later this week with some suggestions on what I would like to see, at least within Ward Four. At the macro level, I wonder if you mentioned, and I was glad to hear, the State Roadways Committee that you're going to reach out to for their vetting of your list and suggestions on what else might be appropriate. I wonder if you have any plans, though it seems appropriate also to maybe reach out to the parent teacher associations at the various schools.
They have been invited and have assisted in pulling together this plan.
Fantastic.
So once we've gone through and embedded it internally, we'll be reconvening that meeting and inviting some of the schools that weren't able to attend before. So parents, teachers, students, elected officials.
Right. And tonight, with visions of sugarplums in my head, I will be thinking of other things to add to this list.
Just as a note, the crosswalk that Councilmember Siemens is talking about is thermoplasty and a lot of the new projects that we've been involved with require that as opposed to the painting because it is so much more durable.
It's very visible and it actually is even attractive while being very visible. And I agree with you, it's very durable. And I would like to see it other places in the city also, I agree with you.
That was a, that was a.
I understand it's expensive, but.
Yeah, painted crosswalks were a serious problem on Maple Avenue in the past and that's why these crosswalks have been so beneficial.
Can I add another suggestion? There's a number of things here, but there's not really a lot of enforcement type items. If we could think of a, sort of a speed enforcement and stop sign enforcement program that would be coordinated with school, not so much when school starts because that's usually during rush hour or early rush hour in the morning and traffic's not really going that fast, although they are going through stop signs. But in the afternoon also, it is, kids are leaving school at a time when people are not slowed down by a great deal of traffic. And I think a targeted speed enforcement and stop sign and other road enforcement program would be very helpful. And, you know, we can, you know, just coordinate it and target it for, you know, times of day when there's a lot of kids on the street. But I think it would be, it would be helpful for the schools, I think it would be helpful for, you know, people who are going to get their kids and I think it would be useful for the community at large.
In a sense, that was, that is what bullet number three was targeted for, particularly for the after-school programming that's offered at the middle school.
Right, but I'd like to see it expanded to other places.
We can investigate that. Again, we need to finesse it so that it works in terms of children walking to school because it can't be just a pure traffic.
Right, I understand that. But for example, Terry mentioned Maple Avenue. There's a lot of children who walk along Maple Avenue to and from school and even though there's a 15 mile an hour speed limit, I seem to be, when I'm driving down there, the only car observing the 15 mile an hour speed limit. So I think that that could probably use some speed enforcement too.
We will continue to contact people about, for input on this project and we'll bring this back to you in October.
I agree with Terry that this is an excellent idea and I appreciate you pulling it together and involving the PTAs and the city committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a discussion or a continued discussion of a number of items that the, that the council wanted to talk about related to city committees. This evening, we're going to focus on a particular issue, which is qualifications for appointment. Bruce had mentioned earlier that we ought to make sure that people who are appointed to city committees are current on their property taxes, stormwater fees, et cetera. That was an informal request, which the staff did comply with, but they suggested to us that if we wanted to make this an ongoing. to us that if we wanted to make this an ongoing requirement, then we should enact it in a more formal way. So, this is the opportunity for the council to talk about whether we would like to see this on an ongoing basis, and give the staff some direction. We'll get Bruce first, because he initiated this.
Um, I think we, I think we do need to formalize it. There's suggestions here, possible suggestions for inclusion in the cover memo about rental license fees and sanitation charges for rental property and library fines. And the thought I had on library fines was, I wasn't sure everybody wanted to be trying to keep track of, I don't know what they are, but let's say 25 cents or something that somebody owes. So, I thought, in that case, there might be a threshold amount over which somebody would be tripped up on this, and it would be something that was sufficient amount that it was obvious that it was a problem rather than just an oversight. And I'm not sure what that amount would be. What I, the thought that I had was $10, but that may not be appropriate. But I think that we ought to include all of these things, just like if there were, I know that we've, we've had a couple of landlords on COLTA, and you want to make sure that they're not serving on COLTA while having not gotten their, you know, license fees for their units or anything like that. So, I think there's any number of ways that we, we certainly want to give people the opportunity to serve on committees, but we also don't want to be appointing people to committees who aren't upholding other ends of the bargain.
And, and my assumption is that your, your suggestion was, was the same as it was initially, that we would notify people that they were in arrears, and they would be able to pay their, what they owed.
Sure.
And then they would, could be appointed to the committees. Not like, oops, you're in arrears, you're off forever.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
As, as soon as they're in compliance, they're capable of, they're eligible.
Okay. Terry?
I, Bruce has covered what I wanted to talk about.
Okay. Anyone else?
Agreed.
So, the council wishes to make this a formal policy, and then we would, then communicate this in our, you know, our boilerplate where we notify people, we, when we solicit people who are interested in serving on city committees, and this would be part of what we would notify them about, that they would have to be up to date on all this sort of thing.
The only comment I wanted to make is certainly the staff will, you know, do its best. In the case of rental license fees or anything associated with a rental property, obviously a lot of times, that may be held in some sort of corporate entity. We're relatively small, a lot of times we can make the connection between an individual and a corporate name, but that may not always be the case. But certainly, we'll make every effort to see if we can, you know, check any applicable area when someone is coming before you for a board or commission.
I think a reasonable, good-faith effort should be the standard.
You're not, you're not under mic.
A reasonable, good-faith effort should be the standard, certainly not anything so exhaustive as to burn up huge amount of time.
Not perfection.
Not perfection.
My understanding is this is only when someone comes up for reappointment, that you're not asking the staff to check for anyone who's currently kind of midterm, if you will, on a committee.
No. And I, you were talking about reappointments too, not just initial appointments, Bruce.
We have been applying it to reappointments.
Initial and reappointments.
Okay, initial and reappointments, you said. All right, that sounds fine to me. And yes, I would agree, I don't think that this is meant to be a, you know, everybody's going to be scrutinized, but we should probably let people know from now on out that, that the council will be doing this. And I would agree with Bruce that there ought to be some de minimis number that we use if somebody's got a 25 cent library fine that's still outstanding, or, you know, there are, maybe the city manager could suggest to us some de minimis number that, below which it would just be too much trouble to look for.
I can do that.
Okay.
Looking for deadbeats and scofflaws.
We're not looking for somebody whose kid ran up a 25 cent library fine.
Or had a poor memory, or whatever, yeah.
Um, all right. And then the final item is council, walking council meetings. This is something that the council used to do on a regular basis, and we've sort of fallen behind recently. This is fairly time-consuming in terms of council time and staff time, and so the suggestion, the city manager's suggestion is rather than trying to do one per ward per year, we try and do one per ward per council term, which would be every other year, which would mean we do an average of three a year, and we might want to give ourselves some flexibility, because we also try not to do something too close to an election. So, I guess the question here is to find out whether the council is still interested in holding walking council meetings, and whether individual council members will commit to doing the work of planning and working with the city clerk, and also whether there is, are some things that we can do, and there's a number of suggestions here, I don't know if the city manager wants to speak to them, number of suggestions of things that we can do to streamline the walking council meetings and sort of make more efficient use of staff. I don't know if you want to talk to anyone else?
Yeah, given the lateness of the air, I'll just be brief. Included in the agenda packet were some guidelines that apparently the council developed, you know, five and a half years ago. In talking to some of the staff, as well as the city clerk, there were a couple items that we thought might be helpful, just in terms of streamlining the process a little bit, and probably making the, the walks a little bit more productive. The guidelines currently talk about three weeks' notice. My suggestion was that if this is something the council would like to do, that perhaps we could kind of look at a six-week timeframe. My thought would be that one, it would allow a little bit more planning time. We would definitely, within that six weeks, be able to catch one of the newsletter cycles, which generally is a pretty effective way of, you know, equally communicating when the walks are taking place. If it's only three weeks, depending on when we are, where we're at in the newsletter cycle, we may not be able to do that. It'll be kind of hit or miss. If we were able to use the newsletter, the city clerk had mentioned to me that perhaps the newsletter in conjunction with sending out notifications to the various listservs may negate the necessity of doing flyers, which can be somewhat time-consuming, and there is a cost associated with that. The other suggestion that I had was that, at the time the council member requests the walk, that same sort of six-week timeframe, perhaps the city clerk and I could speak to the council member about any areas of specific interest, in terms of trying to identify what staff members might be needed. Currently, that timeframe talks about, I believe it's a week or so. Obviously, as I understand it, most of these walks have occurred on the weekend.
Yeah.
It's obviously a very busy time for everyone, including some of the staff who may have other plans, and I just would like to make sure that we have enough notice, that I can let the staff members know who need to be in attendance, just to make it as productive as we can be. So, those were some of the specific items. The other thing in talking to some of the staff, he's been here longer, and just not, don't have a specific recommendation, is just in terms of what we do, in terms of refreshments, it, it increases the number of staff people who have to be there. It may be something that instead of, you know, doing it throughout the walk, that perhaps it's something that's done at the end or at the beginning, just to streamline it a little bit. But obviously, some of you have more experience than Jesse and I do with the walks, since they haven't been done during my tenure here, and I don't think she's had any firsthand involvement in them.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Porter. I guess a couple of things. Number one, these walks, I think, stopped before you got here, Barb, and I found the walks to be a good opportunity to bring community members together, to get more, you know, people who don't normally deal with the city staff, it gives them a, it's an alternative way to introduce them to city staff and kind of what their city government does. But, I also found it to be, in many cases, to have minimal benefit, because many of the things that were identified, and I remind you, this was with the previous city manager, many of the things identified didn't seem to get taken care of when there were issues that were brought forward by the residents. So, again, I would expect that if, you know, if people do come out and we do walk down and, and identify certain things that need to be addressed, that there needs to be, either the, the issues need to be addressed, or there needs to be feedback to the, to the residents as far as why it's not taken care of.
No, I think that's a good point. I did discuss this with the management team last week, and some of whom, you know, were in the city's service when basically these were ongoing. I think the staff probably somewhat shares your concern about wanting to make sure that they're staggered enough, that it doesn't become overly burdensome, you know, given other priorities, because the staff felt badly that some things maybe weren't being followed up on as quickly as some of the residents might expect. I think one of the things that might be helpful when we're setting these up is to maybe work with each council member in terms of, you know, what the items are, what type of follow-through might be reasonable, and kind of set up a communication process with the residents in that particular ward, so that at least everyone's on the same page and doesn't feel frustrated by the experience.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, and I think it's helpful not just for the residents, but also for the council member for the particular wards, because sometimes when you go down through the neighborhood and, and identify the problems, the staff members, and then it becomes unclear who's, who's, who's taking the ball at that point. Then my other comment, another comment, is that I found these walks to be beneficial, but I think they were more beneficial when we had the commitment from the council representatives to show up, not only at their own, but at the, in the other wards, because I think it offered a, a good opportunity for the council members to become familiar with, you know, all neighborhoods in the city. And I was disappointed that many of these council walks didn't have good attendance by us on the council. So, I would hope that if, if we really want to do this, that we commit that we will try to show up for each of these walks, since there are only going to be three a year if we follow this plan. And then my, uh, my last comment is that, you know, this, there seemed to be a lot of resources put into these walks in the past, and I think that was why it was a conscious effort. They didn't just fall off the table. It was something that the council made a, a conscious decision not to continue these, and it was because of the, partially because of the amount of money and staff time that was put into preparing for these. And I would like to suggest that maybe we change the format a little, and, and maybe have the, the neighborhood host the, the walks, rather than the city government host the walks, and have the, the neighborhood, maybe through the, the civic association, the neighborhood associations, take care of whatever refreshments that they deem appropriate for their neighborhood or desirable, or not having refreshments. I mean, but, but leave that level of the, of the process to the neighborhood associations rather than to our staff, and then we can have, you know, I, uh, then we minimize the staff time, and I think we should look for ways to do that, especially because it's extra effort on the staff's part, at least on the day of the, of the walk, since it is on a, normally on a Saturday. So, I guess that's it.
Please?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I had asked for this to be put on the agenda. The original council walking tours were something that I saw that Rockville did, and thought it would be a good idea for us to do, and I had some renewed interest when there was a presentation at the COG Board Retreat by Arlington County on what they did. And I, and one of the things that Terry was talking about was that they were kind of in, in coordination with the neighborhood association. I thought that it was also possible that we could consider setting them up on something other than a ward basis or a neighborhood basis. There could also be the opportunity for a focused walking tour that might cover different wards in the city around a theme, such as potential development issues, or pedestrian safety issues, or broader traffic and pedestrian safety issues. And I think the, the way to do any of those types of walking tours is a little bit more focused work ahead of time. The sample from Arlington County, that was all of the information that went out ahead of time, so that there were more focused outcomes anticipated, so that it was, some of ours got a little free form, and that can be good, but I think we can also mix that with some, some focused walks, where we get a broad look at some issues that are citywide, so that everybody can get that sense and have some input and benefit from that, then it's a, it's a good way to get out and look at some different issues with more eyes on them. And if we do a, on occasion, a, one focused around a particular issue, that also makes it so that you don't have to have, you know, representatives from six or seven different areas go on the tour, it might be just one or two people from a particular area for the staff, so that we don't burn everybody out that way as well. So, I think if we have some flexibility on the types of ones that we do, and have them less numbers of times per year, as has been suggested, I think they could be beneficial.
With the proviso that, since I'm not a ward council member, I haven't been responsible for organizing one of these, although I have been on, I think, every single one. And I would agree with Terry that I think they're much more successful when the council sees them as a benefit to us, rather than it's just something we're doing for the neighborhood, and so council members tend not to come on the ones other than for their ward. And I think that part of our, if we do want to do these, I think that we should make a commitment ourselves, as Terry suggested, to attending all of them, and I do think it's a good way for people to get to learn about issues in other wards. I think, Bruce, your suggestion about doing them around themes is an interesting one. I wonder, though, what would happen to the sort of the neighborhood focus? One of the nice things about the way we do it now is because a council member is responsible for organizing them rather than staff, that there is really a focus on neighborhood-level issues in a, on a particular ward. I wonder if we were doing development, say, or pedestrian safety, whether they would end up being organized by staff, rather than by council members?
What I was thinking about there was, I've noticed that in a number of cases, we have very similar issues coming up with the money we set aside for some reconfiguration of intersections. I've had two different associations approach me about, gee, we've been thinking about these particular issues, and I think to myself, this is exactly what's been talked about, like down at Lincoln and Elm and different places. What's the process here? If, I think if more people were aware of that, there might be a little bit of an ability not to kind of reinvent the wheel every time we do one of these, but have a little bit broader sense, so that if it was something on pedestrian safety issues, it would be, okay, where are the areas that the neighborhoods have identified, and let's look at them all at the same time, and that way, when we come to budget time, we're not going, oh, well, I have this project, oh, well, what about my project? We have a sense of them.
And I, and I see where you're going. I think you could also accomplish that by having, you know, if, if there were a certain number of themes, if the council decided, for example, we wanted to look at development issues and pedestrian safety issues, say, or three things, then council members could keep that in mind and sort of working on their own walks. Terry?
I like Bruce's idea, but I think it falls outside of the scope of these ward walks. I, I think it's an excellent idea, though, for other walks that are organized with topic or issue-specific things, such as development or pedestrian safety. I would like to think that, you know, some of those, I know we've had in the past with the, the Safe Roadways Committee has put on a couple of events for pedestrian, on pedestrian safety. I know that, that city staff put on some drives through the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, look at those specific incidents. I think what I'm hearing from Bruce, and I know that I agree with him, that those are very beneficial, and maybe we should consider those as, as methods for outreach, which we're always struggling with, how do we do outreach on specific topics? That it's an approach to doing the outreach that, that city staff and the council can use more effectively in the future. But I think it falls outside of the scope of what we're talking about tonight.
And just let me be clear that I'm not saying it should be one or the other. I'm saying if we have a little flexibility and have a mix of different kinds of things, I know I was very happy with the, with the ward-centric walks, but it might be that if we're doing three a year, a way to cover more, you know, all the wards in the year might be to have, say, one of those and do two ward walks or something, because some people, when we did them, weren't inclined to do ward walks. did them, weren't inclined to do ward walks. So, if there are particular issues that need ward walks, those can happen, but it might be that if we're just constricted to only ward walks, and people don't want to do them, but we have these other issues, we can do those as well.
In terms of the two council members who are not here, Colleen said she wasn't feeling well, but was quite interested in doing a walk in her ward. Mark said that since the likelihood is he wouldn't be around long enough to do a ward walk, that he felt that his input wasn't really necessary in the discussion. Unless people disagree, I'm hearing generally an interest in resuming these. I think it's probably going to take a commitment from everybody here to actually organize one. I also think that the city manager's suggestions are good ones. I think the issue of refreshments, we can work with the neighborhood association on that. I think it's kind of nice for the council to essentially host something that the neighborhood can come to, although I would agree with the city manager that I don't think we need to do it repeatedly. We could maybe pick a central location in the ward, and the council member from that ward could help us, and we could invite people to, you know, join us for refreshments at the end of the walk, and that might be a nice way to sort of host the neighborhood. And if the neighborhood wanted to provide something from us, we could certainly discuss that. I don't see that they necessarily have to be mutually exclusive. Some neighborhoods would be probably more set up to do that than others. But I do think in general that the suggestions the city manager has made are good. And if the council is willing, if all the members of the council are willing to commit to do one of these, I think we can move forward with this. I would note that if we're going to pick months with reasonable weather that don't run into the next city election, then probably the first one's going to have to be in October. So, somebody's going to need to sort of get themselves organized pretty quickly, because in order to do it in October, you've pretty much got to start planning now. So, somebody should be ready to go pretty quickly. I don't know, maybe Colleen would be, I don't want to volunteer her, but she seemed real interested. Terry?
Mayor Porter, my wife has committed me not to organizing anything else before the holidays after the Maple Avenue Culture Fair that we just completed this last weekend. However, in talking with the residents of Ward Four, they're extremely interested in having a, resuming, having us resume the walks through the ward. And I would certainly be interested in hosting the council at one of those walks sometime shortly after the holidays.
Not too soon.
And what we had talked about and planned was that if these walks are resumed, we would end the walk at some type of event where you could get an appreciation, not just of our neighborhood, but of the people who live in the neighborhood. And so, we might like to plan it so that we end up back here at the community center, where you can meet some of the Ward Four residents, and here are some of the talents that we have within Ward Four.
That sounds like a very good idea.
So, I would be asking if we could get a date in the springtime.
I was going to suggest, if the council's interested in doing this, I think the most likely months we're talking about are October, November of this year, and then April, May, June, and September of next year. Those are pretty much the most likely months. And what I would suggest is that the city clerk email around months to council members, and council members can select one that works with their schedule, and then we'll move ahead from there.
I would like to volunteer for May of next year, and we'll do it on my birthday. I mean, if we're going to have an event at the end, why not?
We can have a big birthday campaign.
Oh, you want the city to pay for your birthday party?
No, I said that Ward Four would host it.
Oh, your constituents are going to pay for your birthday party.
There you go.
And so, unless I'm seeing something to the contrary, I'm assuming that the council members would like to resume walking council meetings under the circumstances that have been suggested here?
I appreciate the discussion that we've had. The thing that I would be most in favor of is what was talked about in terms of having a theme, and then going citywide to explore areas where that theme was in effect, such as pedestrian safety or economic development. I think that is kind of a new spin on it. It will bring a certain amount of cohesiveness to the day and probably attract...